Okay, everybody, we're gonna start the meeting here in a couple minutes. Okay, everyone. Let's have a call to order here. This is Dania Beach City Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, just after seven P M. City Clerk Alora, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lawellin.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here always.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor McCorm.
Alright, thank you clerk. Everybody, please bow their head for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Getting into business, item three point one. For presentation, special event approvals, this is a presentation by Jacob McCag, regarding his Eagle Scout project, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Lawellin.
Thank you. Bring Jacob up. I know Jacob came to see me right before the last meeting that we had, and he has a very interesting project that I think you'll all enjoy hearing about. And this is, he'll explain the reason why he's doing this, I'm sure. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Jacob McCag, and I am thirteen years old, and I currently in eighth grade at Beachside Montessori Village, and I have lived in Dania Beach my entire life. I am also extremely involved in scouting. As a scout, the highest achievement that can be earned is Eagle Scout. To achieve this requires learning and mastering many skills, as well as taking on various leadership roles. But what is probably considered the most important part is the Eagle Project. Any scout looking to earn their eagle must complete a service project that benefits the community, and I would like mine to benefit the community where I live. This brings me to my proposal to city, to the city. I would like for my Eagle Project to be a drop box here at City Hall where people can bring their American flags to be retired. When the box is full, my troop would be able to come and collect the flag so they, they can be properly retired. All fundraising and building of the drop box would be done by myself and my troop, and the box would be presented here at City Hall. I have a short PowerPoint that shows the dimensions and proposed appearances of the flag drop box. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Eagles, this is my Eagle Scout project. And I am in troop four nine six. Flag, the flag retirement box. I hope to build a flag retirement box to put in City Hall that will raise awareness to help people retire their flags the proper way. Currently, there is one other flag retirement box at the American Legion, but is frequently backed up. This project will be beneficial for the community and shows respect for our flag and all that it represents. Here is a diagram of my, of the flag drop box that I made on Photoshop. The back would be forty-eight inches, the front would be forty-two inches, and it would be twenty-two by twenty-two. It's going, it's going to have the, what it is on the front, and it's going to have scouting on the one side, and the, and how, and the military on this, on the other side, since this is a flag retirement box. And it would have a plaque on top, which shows that it was made by my troop. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, and I believe, Jacob, when we talked about this, this is gonna be a wooden box that's gonna have like a vinyl or something cover on it?
Yes.
So it'll be able to stand the elements?
Yes.
Right. And I just wanna ask our city attorney, is there anything, any issues with the logos or anything like that on the box that would be a problem?
As long as we authorize our logo if they, they're trying to do that, the military, I don't see an issue with, as far as their logos, but I really don't see an issue with that.
Okay. Would I have to present this as a discussion item at a later time in order to get it voted down, or could we vote it, vote on it now? I'd like to vote on it now so he'd be able to have an answer and be able to move forward. Go ahead, questions?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, great job, Jacob. I wanna know if you already have the boxes, do you need funding for the boxes?
I need approval before I can start building the box, but all fundraising and building will be done by my troop.
Fantastic.
Commissioner James?
Yes, great job, Jacob. It was similar to what Commissioner Davis asked. Would you like a, I would like to give a donation to help build your box. And I think that with Veterans Park that's going to eventually come here, it would be fitting for it to have some type of a security. Maybe they come check in here with Ken or whoever, and then it's a lock on it so that people aren't putting things that don't belong in the box in the box. But I would like to donate five hundred dollars to the box. You have any issues? Okay.
Nope. Alora? Commissioner Salvino?
I was just gonna see what it costs to build a box and see if we would all contribute towards it, and instead of you spending all, but that's up to you. Yeah, what does, what does the box cost you to make it, how much do you think about?
I'm not sure about the price, but I'll need, but I have vinyl being donated.
Commissioner? Oh. Yeah, okay, yeah, well, if you find out how much it costs, I mean, you think five hundred dollars will cover the, the build a box?
I believe so.
Alright, okay. Alright, so you're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna donate it from the commission, we're all gonna contribute a little bit, is that okay, Mayor?
That's fine, I just don't want it to interfere with how we.
His fundraising goes?
Eagle project, yeah.
Well, do you?
If they have to pay for it and raise the money.
Uh, no.
Okay.
That's fine.
He just fundraised, he just fundraised.
Alright.
Okay. So we each, so we each give you a hundred dollars, a piece of that's five hundred dollars, is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Perfect.
If you need more, you come back and ask.
And to be clear, we have consensus to leave the box here, correct?
Yes.
Is the box gonna be inside City Hall?
I recommend that.
Yeah. And your, your mic.
Cause we have our security guard there, and we can help you promote it on, on our social media, and our elected officials can promote it as well. And it will have the box safely secured, as soon as you walk in, we'll find a very visible place adjacent to our entrance and our security guard.
Alright. Thank you.
No, my pleasure. And you know what we could do, if you have it on wheels, for like special events, like for example, Dania After Dark, and we have big events, we can bring it out, because that draws thousands of people, and we can let everybody know that the box is gonna be out there too, so we can be able to further promote and have a greater reach.
So I will make a motion for approval of this project? Second?
Alright, I have a motion from Vice Mayor, I have a second from Commissioner Salvino, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
No nays.
Alright, Jacob.
Great job, great job, Jacob. Great job, he needs, he needs something signed, so we can have the mayor sign it. For you. Great way to start off the meeting tonight.
Hold up, hold up, I got a better angle over here. Get closer, Jacob, get closer. There you go. Beautiful, alright. I'll stand. I'll send you.
Yes. And thank you to the commission.
Alright. I agree, Vice Mayor, great way to start the meeting. Item three point two is the introduction of Dania Point Vice President Meredith Keeler.
Meredith will be coming at the next meeting, she had a conflict, so I was informed by the Dania Point team that she'll be here at the February meeting.
We'll move it to the next meeting. Item three point three is special event application. This is Dolphins Challenge Cancer fourteen, and this is Parks and Recreation item.
Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, residents that are here with us, and city team, this is an event that we've been working with the Dolphins Challenge for various years, is basically they drive through the city in, in their efforts to fundraise for, for cancer, and we just wanna have your support in all the different departments have given it the thumbs up.
Okay, Commissioner James?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner James, I have a second from Vice Mayor Lawellin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, any opposed? Okay. On to item three point four, this is special event application Marina eighty-four Bike Night, this Parks and Recreation item.
Yes, this is an event that they've been hosting for a while now, and it's, it's been very popular. I've met with the manager, because the biggest concern was noise, we've spoken to them about our noise ordinance, and they definitely wanna comply, but it's a great event, and it's gone through all the departments as well.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Commissioner James, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, okay. Item three point five is presentation on Community Grants Program and Discretionary Use Funds. This is our guy Frank DiPaolo from Finance.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Frank DiPaolo, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the city. This is not my Eagle Scout project, but congratulations to the young man on, on this project and securing that funding. So what I do have to talk to you tonight is, is another form of how we support the community in the city, and that's our Community Grants Program and our discretionary use policy. So just wanted to kinda bring this before you, we adopted this policy about two years ago, and we haven't really talked about the policy since then, so we just wanted to bring it to you, because we're coming into the budget season, and we wanna look at establishing some funding for the grant program that would kick off this October. And. So as you can see, it's to allow transparent support to local nonprofits and charitable organizations that are providing beneficial programs and services to the community. So, so this policy governs the use of these grant funds, as well as the discretionary fund accounts, which you all know as the city individual commissioner contingency, they're all kinda tied into the same program and policy. So the funding is established each year through the adopted budget. We haven't actually provided funding yet for the Community Grants Program since its inception. The key of the program is that all the programs and events should be aligned with the city strategic planning goals that were adopted in two thousand and twenty-one, and those are actually listed in the policy itself. Each year, the city commission can establish through the budget, the amount of money that you wanna contribute in grants, and then, and obviously myself, city manager, will give you some guidance on the amount and what you feel comfortable with, and then we would kick off the applications in October, keep it open for about sixty days, and then we would bring forward all applications that met the minimum requirements, and then it's up to the city commission to decide how many grants to give out, the amount for each award, and to whom. There is a minimum eligibility criteria, like we talked about, that really promote the city, provide a social benefit to our residents and the community, help people if there's any need with like natural events, like, you know, sandbags, things like that for hurricanes, and eligible applicants would receive funding for general operating and capital expenses, any program related expenses, activities and functions that generally occur within the city boundaries. We know that sometimes there may be an event or something held for the benefit of the city, but it's not within the city, and that's okay, as long as it's here to benefit the city. And then anything responding to a community need, underserved demand, or anything that contributes to the positive image of the city of Dania Beach. We have a list of things that are not allowable, things that have already occurred, we're not going We have a list of things that are not allowable, things that have already occurred. We're not going to fund those through the, the grant program like on a reimbursement basis. Um, charitable causes that have no observable benefit to the city or its residents, and the list goes on there. There are some restrictions. Each organization can submit one funding application each year. If they don't spend the money, for whatever reason, they have to return the funds back to the city if they, if they did receive funding in advance. And, um, anything that we give an award for is not guaranteed they're gonna get it every year from here on out. They'd have to reapply for that funding each year. And then it would, key that the funding that we give them is only used for the purpose that they applied for. So at the end of the program, they're gonna provide a report that shows how much they received, how much they spent, and what was the benefit, maybe have some pictures of events they held, or, you know, the actual benefits of the community that was provided. Like I said, we'll screen the applications and we'll provide to you the, the list of those that met the minimum requirements, and then it would be up to the city commission to decide on, on the awards. Now, we would like to, you know, just put this in front of you so you have an idea and something to think about. We're gonna be having budget workshops coming up. Like we did last year in the springtime, we had our first one in April last year. So, um, if you'd like to establish the program, we would like to support it and, um, you know, so we, we don't have to decide on an amount tonight, but we definitely want to just get, get it in front of you so you start thinking about it. Now, connected with that is a discretionary use policy, as I mentioned earlier. This policy that governs how we use this commissioner contingency was adopted at the same time it's in the policy for the community grants program. And really what it is, is anything that we do in the community grants program is how we spend the money for the discretionary use. The difference is that it's available to the individual commissioners if they hear about something that came up that wasn't provided for, or that wasn't available, let's say, at the time that the application process went out, that you could bring it forward and then get a consensus approval among the city commission to fund that initiative or that project or that, that, um, that program. So again, same transparency and accountability as a community grant program and aligned with the strategic planning goals. As you know, it's a consensus approval of the city commission. Procurement approvals of the city still apply, so, um, anything that we're buying, if it exceeds a certain threshold, we need to see quotes, et cetera. And again, the eligibility is aligned with the community grants program. The other thing that does apply here that, um, we, you know, we're, I'm okay with, you know, you've all been contributing as a consensus to these different emerging needs and, and requests. But really, we're only supposed to provide funding to one organization, the organization once per year. Now, if, if you feel the need is there, it's up to you guys. You guys can, you, you make the rules, you can decide how you want to proceed with that, but, um, but that's also in the policy just so that you're aware of that. Um, and again, same thing, if we awarded this year, doesn't mean it's gonna be next year. And you're, there should be no expectation that the funding will continue. And, um, lastly, and really importantly, an organization cannot receive both a community grant and a discretionary use allocation from the city commission. So if they apply for the community grant, they get it, we can't then give the money for something else another way. So it's kind of one or the other. But it also allows you to, for organizations that maybe couldn't apply or didn't apply, that, and you felt that there was a, a worthy need, you could contribute to them through discretionary use on a consensus basis. And then the last thing that I want to talk about tonight briefly is the city commission expense allowance, which is kind of tied in with supporting the local community. There's a lot of items on there that are, um, you know, you all received this expense allowance and it's used for your attending events and functions, travel within the tri-county area, things like that, that are, um, that are kind of in the course of your business as a city elected official. And allow you to support the community in ways that maybe the community grant program or the discretionary use funds can't. So kind of just between these three programs, they all kind of fill in the gaps out there that you guys see as elected officials, so. That's all I have on that tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to, to, to the manager, if you want to meet with me individually or talk about anything that questions about, I can meet with you separately from this meeting tonight, but that's it.
Thank you, Frank. Commissioner James?
Yes, Frank, I have two questions. Um, the first goes back to the discretionary, uh, funds. And, and thank you for this, because we definitely, definitely need, um, strict, um, more clarified guidelines, uh, when we are asking for approval for certain things. So for the discretionary use, is it only for nonprofits and projects? I think that needs to be more clear.
Tech, tech, in accordance with the policy, it's anything that would apply for the community grant program applies to discretionary use. So it really is the same. So it's, technically it's for nonprofits, charitable organizations, um, but.
But what happens if, okay, so, you know, cause I have, I have a request today, but they're not, and I'm not sure if they're nonprofit or they're LLC. Either way, they will be providing a service to the community. And so is, is that okay, or is that?
What I, what I would suggest is that if you do want to have more flexibility with that, then we amend the policy. We can bring it back to you for, to amend it, to just open it up a little bit, that way there's no conflict.
But what, what is your recommendation, though?
I don't have a recommendation on that. It's totally up to you guys.
Okay, so I, I, I definitely will want to, to add that language, um, because there are some LLCs that, that can do some work, or if you want, if we have different projects that we want to bring to the community and then there are not nonprofit, I'm not sure again if what I'm going to bring later on is or, or is not. Um, however, I want to be sure when we're bringing things up here, we, we are sure with that. So, okay, so a lot of the other things that we've asked to do probably is, are going to stop, or is there, do we need to discuss it here first and then you'll tell us if, if this is acceptable or not acceptable, or do we need to have a workshop on this? Cause there's a lot of gray areas.
Well, just to, to go back to your other question about the organizations and the eligibility, when it comes to the community grants policy, when we put that together, we looked at several other cities and modeled it after what other cities are doing. So when it comes to the community grants, I would like to keep it strictly nonprofit charitable organizations.
Sure.
If you want to modify the discretionary use to make it, to give some more leeway, flexibility, then just tell us what you're looking for and we'll discuss it, and we can bring back some amendments to the policy.
Okay. And then my second question is, it, it kind of seemed like, um, the two on the funding one time per year, um, kind of contradicts it because you said we should only fund one organization once per year, but then it's up to us. And then you went on to say either or, I mean, it, it would still be twice one way or the next, so. If we decided through our discretionary funds to fund an organization, and at the end of the fiscal year, we say we want to give another donation to that organization, I don't think we should, I think we should, uh, be consistent with one time per year for the organization.
Okay.
Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Davis?
Just, can you have a copy of the presentation for the listing of everything that we discussed here tonight?
Absolutely. I'd like to provide all of you with a copy of the presentation as well as the dis, the, the community grant policy discretionary use and all that stuff, just so you have it.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next for item three point six, uh, we have a very exciting, uh, presentation for the Olson Middle School conceptual design by Cassie Warren, our Parks and Recs Director.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Cassie Warren, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, as you're aware, we, we leased from the Broward County School Board just over six and a half acres of the old middle school, old Olson Park, old Olson Middle School. And we are going to turn that into a park. And as part of our agreement with the school board, there's a list of certain improvements that we've agreed to put in that location to include security fence, gate, uh, tennis courts, pickleball courts, a multi-purpose field that can be utilized for open play, football, soccer, uh, full-size track, uh, that can be utilized for walking, exercise, a parking lot, a small-scale compute, a small community center, and then playgrounds. So, uh, in part of this year's budget, we have funding to go forward with the design of Olson Park Middle School. And so before you tonight, we are showing you a conceptual design of how we would like to, um, proceed with this design. You'll see in the concept up on the screens, that is a full-size four-hundred-meter track. It is a four-lane track, so we would have to do heats if we have a large track meet. Uh, but it will accomplish the purpose of having a track program here in our city. On the north side, in the west corner, is the playground, uh, as well as a community center, small, small community center, thirty-five hundred square feet, hoping to become home to some of the admin of the Parks and Recreation staff, as well as a small community meeting area for HOAs, community meetings such as that. There is the parking lot on the west half, just to the north of the park, or to the east of the parking lot. Those two yellow structures are bleachers, covered bleachers. And then just south of the parking lot, you have two pickleball courts, a basketball court, and a tennis court. And if we receive blessing, then we will move forward with this conceptual design to continue to go out for bid and actually move the design forward.
Commissioner James, I start with you.
Yes, thank you, Cassie. Um, and thank you for this. This is long overdue, and I just want to, uh, be on the record to say this design may or may not change. So this is conceptual, but this may or may not be what the finalized product looks like. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve three point six.
I have a motion. Commissioner Davis?
I have questions. Um, Cassie, did we go out and talk to the community about this design? Or do we have plans to be able to do that after this is approved? Has that, any community buy-in been put in for this?
I know there was previous community buy-in that was taken into account when the agreement was put together with the school board and what was included in that improvements of the school board.
I also, I also want to add, then, when we were having the, the Parks Master Plan, particularly the, the discussion for, um, CW Thomas, um, you know, my conversations with, with our mayor, uh, Commissioner, eh, James, eh, the Vice Mayor, pretty much with, with all of you. Um, we were a, a, a bit disappointed that we couldn't get everything we wanted, you know, at CW. Um, and how important it is, you know, to be able to have our, our residents and our youth be able to, to walk around a, a track in a, in a very safe en, environment. And to be able to add track and field to our repertoire. So this is something that, that we've been discussing for many, many years. Um, for example, I know Commissioner Davis, you've discussed with us the, the need for, for pickleball. This is something that I know the Vice Mayor has just discussed with me. Um, so this is an ongoing, open conversation that we have, uh, with the community. Um, but like, uh, Commissioner James says, this is for us to be, to begin to take the steps for the design, but it, it's something that could fluctuate. Um, we can make some adjustments. Um, one of the things that we hadn't thought about was, you know, kids are there for the whole day for food. Rather than running a, a concession, which gets to be expensive and you need more personnel, we discussed, you know, being able to have a designated area that we could have some food trucks. So this is, um, eh, in flux, and it's, it's something that can move if, if other ideas come. Um, our goal is also to be able to work with the school. Um, when that school was designed and built, um, many, many years ago, um, there was close to two thousand students there. Now there's six hundred and change. So there's a lot of open spaces and we'd love to continue this partnership and be able to see some more opportunities to have more, um, covered spaces in addition to the, uh, thirty-five hundred square foot, um, office that we have now.
Okay, um, I also want to, um, bring light to the fact that when, um, last year, there was, I received, I, I requested to see a concept of the, uh, Olson Park plan. And the plan that, um, and I was told that there was no concept as of yet, but, um, I did receive a concept plan that is very different from the one that is being shown here today. And I actually liked the original concept better than the one that has been presented here today. So what I would like to do is to be able to have a discussion on both the concepts and be able to bring in the community as, um, people who are buying in to this, uh, community facility to make sure that the people, um, who I know that Mimi was a, a big part of taking Olson, making sure that we got that project complete. Um, we've had discussions with the Boys and Girls Club. We've had discussions with, uh, Olson Middle School students who came in here and did presentations, um, discussing what the students would want and what the principal would want. So what I would like to do is to, uh, eliminate the confusion that I have two different concept plans here, be able to bring in the community for a workshop and let everyone weigh in on what they visualize and conceptualize, um, this, this concept plan to be. Because I actually really like the first concept plan that, that I received. This is the first one. This is from twenty nineteen. This, this one is the second one, so. Well, that's what, the date is on the paper, so I'm only going by the date on the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we still have a motion on the floor, Vice Chair?
Um, I, I, I will second it, but I also wanted to make a comment that this is something that has been discussed with the community for many, many years now. And in speaking with the community, the only thing that, um, that I was hearing primarily was, um, well, park, they did not want development, which is important. Number two, I did hear, uh, dog park, and there is a, the doggy area in this. I also heard pickleball. And I know we've talked about there's some pickleball here. There will be more in other parks down the road, which is fine. And, uh, there was some talk at one point about an aquatic center, but I think that was gonna be too much. Um, because that just, it, it's just very expensive to end up doing something like that, so. Um, but this is something that I think would satisfy both the, the students, the school. It has things that help the needs of the school as well. Um, and then also satisfies the needs of the community, uh, who has been very vocal about this for many, many, many years. Um, and the, uh, the building that's there, um, I, we talked about this earlier, I believe, eh, eh, part of the idea is to bring Parks and Rec into one area.
Yes, correct. We currently are housed, our, our, our top-tier management staff is housed out of multiple locations, and this would try to bring us all to one home base.
So that, and that would then free up space in other locations as well.
Correct.
Because I know there's been some issues in some of the other locations where people have been using the area for a period of time, and now they're not, and they'd like to get back to being able to use it. So that would also satisfy that request. So, um, I'm seconding the motion. I'm fine with it.
Okay, I have a motion in the second, and I'll entertain further discussion. Commissioner Davis?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm still seeking, uh, consensus to have a workshop on this, uh, park. I know that there has been, there, or you said that there's been community buy-in, but I've just spoken to the community and there's stakeholders here, and there's community leaders here, and there are a lot of people who would like to, um, weigh in on the concept. So I am seeking, uh, consensus to have a workshop for this, um.
We can't see consensus.
I'm making a motion to.
We're in the middle of a motion. We're in the middle of a motion in the second already. We can't reintroduce another motion. We have to vote on this one first. This is further discussion for the motion in the second that we have to approve the conceptual plan.
Well, this is my discussion.
Okay. I'm just saying, you can't see consensus or make another motion.
Well, I'm not, then I'm not seeing consensus that.
Okay.
That was the wrong terminology. But this is my discussion, so. I would like to, the discussion that I would like to have is to have a workshop on this, to add that to the motion, um, for a first and second, to make sure that we can have a workshop in addition to, um, to amend the motion to include a workshop.
Okay, so I have a, yeah, I have, I have a motion from Commissioner James to approve the conceptual design. I have a second from Vice Chair Lawellin to approve the conceptual, conceptual design, as is. It is a living, breathing document, as we talked about. Okay, so, uh, call to a vote, please, Alora?
Commissioner James? I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis?
Sorry, Commissioner Davis.
As is without the workshop?
Mayor, can I?
Okay.
Okay, um, I will amend the motion to include a workshop just to hear from the residents. Um, but my motion still stands, so I, I, I don't mind having a workshop, hearing from the residents, seeing if it, if it was anything else. Um, but I, I, does that make sense? Okay, so I want to amend the motion. I want to approve this, but I also want to have a workshop. But my motion is to approve this item, but also I, 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 I want, I would accept what Commissioner Davis is saying to hear from the community.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All right, I have a first and a second, uh let's call to a vote please, Laura.
I'm sorry, for clarity, the vice mayor appro- seconded the amendment.
Vice Mayor seconded, yes. Approval of the conceptual design with uh.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you, Laura. All right, thank you Cassie, great, great presentation. We have no proclamation, so we'll skip right into item five point one with our administrative reports and we'll start with Madam Manager Garcia.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh members of our community that are here with us and our city team. Um real briefly, cause I know we have um a lot of you here tonight. Um I just wanted to um update everyone that on January the tenth, um we had a meeting with our CFO and all the department directors. And it's basically to discuss our ARPA funding. Again, that's another li- living, breathing document and we're always assessing and making the necessary changes. Um and recommendations to you all. As an example, um we got federal funding for our E O C, so it allows us to shift more dollars. Um for the historic Nyberg Swanson House and also our historic Women's Club. So in, included here, we have all the backup and all the documentation um for your perusal and your support as well. On January the thirteenth, we held um the first of the year, uh our Dana After Dark. Which occurs the, the second Saturday of um, of the month. It was um Dana After Dark and I wanna, you know, give kudos to our Parks and Recreation Department. It was a fantastic event, the, the music, the, the entertainment, the inter- interactive art was really remarkable. And I invite you to go on our website, um because Dinner at the Hall is coming in February. Um our seafood and, and um, and wine and, and beer fest is coming in March. So we have tickets online and the pre-registration, um they're just gonna be remarkable events. Um I also visited Dana Point the same Saturday, um after we had the Dana After Dark. Um just to evaluate Dana Point and what's going on in, in the evening and um it, it was truly remarkable. Um there, there was a line a block long at the Dana Beach Improv. Um and the, everything was so orderly. Um I went to the movie theater, I went to Bolero, um families, kids, um the contract and the agreement that we have with B S O. And I know our chief is back there, um the security also that um, that Dana Point has there. They're investing over one million dollars a year in, in security. Um but to be able to bring friends of mine that came to Dana After Dark and they were really impressed with the city events. But also how well Dana Point is running, um so I wanted to communicate that to all of you as well. Um I wanted to congratulate, uh congratulate the M L K, Martin Luther King Renaissance Corporation. Who planned and executed some, some wonderful events, the weekend of Dr. Martin Luther King. Um we're going to, as, as we grow, not just our special events, but our community events. We're gonna be working closely with Dana Point as we have with Martin Luther King um organization. Um to be able to augment and enhance and, and better schedule these events so we don't have a conflict in, in, in our scheduling. Um advocacy in Tallahassee is key and that's something that we've been doing for the past five years. Um we've exceeded over five million dollars in the last four visits. Um and, and you don't get that money if you don't develop relationships. Um I've been very blessed to be able to go the, the past couple of years with our mayor, our Commissioner Davis. I've been to Tallahassee also um with the Vice Mayor Lawellin, um with the late Commissioner Bill Harris. Um that was a truly ambassador to our city as well, um and, and we were non-stop. Um I ca- I called Commissioner Davis, I'd say, we gotta be out of our hotel rooms by seven thirty A M. To make a long story short, you know, it was eleven thirty P M that night and we still hadn't gotten home. But we were able to meet um with eight legislators, um in, including the Office of Lieutenant Governor Nunez. Um the uh incoming Speaker of the House designate, Daniel Perez, um with Senator Pizzo. Um our State Representative Hillary Cassell, um eh, Lauren Book. It was non-stop being able to let them know what are our needs in storm drainage, what are our needs in parks and recreation. And I really anticipate that this year we will be successful again in Tallahassee. And that doesn't happen without us going down there and really getting in the trenches and going non-stop for you and, and our community. Um additionally, on January the seventeenth, we had an extensive meeting um with a Calvin G. Ordano Group. Um and you know, we're, we're myself and our Deputy Director um of Community Development. Um our Parks Director and our Deputy City Manager met with them. Because our goal is to really activate um the Arts and Entertainment District um to benefit our community, to benefit our existing businesses. And to be able to, to not just retain our businesses, but to recruit new businesses. Um and we're, we're very excited about what we're gonna be able to do. Um we'd also like to extend um the signage beyond the area of the C R A. Um and have wayfinding signage um up and down uh federal highway. Um from our northernmost point to our southernmost point and let everybody know the availability of our parking garage. Um we also would like to go up and down Dana Beach Boulevard to let everybody know where is the parks, where is City Hall, which way to the beach. Um this, this is a major corridor and we don't want this city just to be a drive-through city. But we want people to know, we're here, we have activities, we have local businesses. So we're very excited um about this upcoming um conversation that we're gonna have with our commission. Um and our C E O is also going to be presenting um as we do, um a mid-year budget adjustment. Cause we're always assessing and we're always going back to our adopted strategic plan. And, and safety for our city is number one. We're gonna be bringing forward an, a mid-year budget adjustment that's going to bring in unprecedented um L P Rs. Um these are license plate readers, this is something that I was the, the communicating and discussing with all our elected officials. And there is such technology and such opportunities. These L P Rs, when, when I became your city manager, there was one in the entire city and it was broken. Um now we have half a dozen and our goal is to be able to secure the city. That if a bad guy or a bad woman or any criminal comes to this city, they're gonna know that every vehicle that's coming in and out of the city is going to be recorded. And we're just extremely excited about augmenting these initiatives. As well as ensuring that we give further support to our um special events and community events. Because that is growing in population, um so we're very excited that we hit the ground running and um this concludes my report and thank you.
Thank you, Manager. Uh City Attorney, any reports?
No reports tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, Reminders?
Yes, so for the month of February, on the fifth, you have your C R A and your joint C R A City Commission Workshop Meeting regarding the patch. That's at four P M. On February thirteenth, you have your C R A meeting at five thirty and your commission meeting at seven P M. And on February twenty-seventh, you have your City Commission Workshop regarding the Form Six and that's at six P M. And then following that, you have your regular City Commission meeting at seven P M. And that's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Clerk. Everybody's good, those dates, okay? Now on to our public safety reports and we'll start with Captain Terrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager. So we had a very, very busy a couple of weeks, so I have a lot to go over tonight. Um I'll start with um a couple of really good arrests we've made and this was just from the last two nights. Um so I'll start with Saturday night, um our Road Patrol deputies who are actively increased our patrols in Northwest Section. Reference an ongoing operational plan, which I'll discuss at the end of our plan. So we observed a scooter driving recklessly uh down Southwest Eighth Avenue with two males on it with ski masks. Our deputies attempted a traffic stop as it began to attempt to evade. Another deputy who was on the other side of the street was able to get them. One of the passengers bailed off, um as he was running, he was holding his waistband with a firearm. He fled, um we set up a perimeter, unfortunately, we were unable to get that subject in the custody. We were able to detain the driver, who was another juvenile and on his person, he had a loaded Taurus nine millimeter handgun. Fully loaded with the serial number scratched off. So obviously, we were able to place him in a custody Saturday night. Um and he was charged with carrying a concealed weapon, car- carrying a concealed firearm by a minor, alternating the serial number on a firearm, as well as the traffic violations. That same night, we made another traffic stop off of our proactivity. In our operational plan, our deputies observed another vehicle driving around the Northwest Section suspiciously. We watched the vehicle, we followed it and upon making a traffic stop of that vehicle, our C S D detectives were able to get two occupants out of that vehicle. And we also recovered two firearms inside that vehicle. So that was three firearms on a single night that we got out of Northwest Section. Um and on two of the three were all juveniles who had those firearms on them. That same night, um our officers were able to locate a stolen twenty-twelve blue Honda Elantra. That was coming through uh the city of Dana, it was actually stolen and it belonged to the Florida Department of Corrections. Our deputies were able to locate the vehicle, we followed it with the assistance, assistance of the helicopter and we tactically followed it. Um it pulled into an apartment complex in the city of Hollywood where three subjects bailed out, three juveniles bailed out. And we were able to find and locate with the assistance of our B S O K nine, two out of the three suspects were placed in the custody. Last night, we made another auto theft arrest, Sergeant Seapod was in the back here, he observed another vehicle suspiciously driving around the area. He was able to get behind it, he was able to get it once the vehicle stopped and he was able to get the occupants out of the vehicle. And he also determined that that vehicle was also stolen. We placed them in a custody for possession of a stolen vehicle and inside that vehicle, we also found narcotics, um M D M A, amphetamine, aprazolam, cocaine. And both occupants in that vehicle were placed in the custody. While we were preparing for this tonight, our C S D team made another traffic stop uh right down the street from over here tonight. And Sergeant Seapod can explain that, they got another subject in the custody tonight with another stolen firearm tonight, right down the street here. So that's five firearms in two nights that we were able to recover from this Northwest Section during our proactivity. Um and I'll talk a little bit about, again, the proac- approach that we're doing, I'll let Seapod talk about that at the end. In the last two weeks, through our also, our homeless outreach team that's always very proactive. They were able to identify in working with our code enforcement. We were able to shut down and remove six homeless encampments that we found throughout the city. We found one at the Secret Woods along the Southwest Section of the tracks, one was behind the Miami Subs. One was behind the Walmart, one was behind the Walgreens off of Sheridan Street that we're working with code enforcement right now to have the Walgreens clean up their property. We found another one off of, behind the skate park, which we all know at seven oh one North Federal Highway, while Jen and Reyes went over there on a hunch. And when they went over there, they realized that there was two homeless encampments that popped up over there at the skate park again. So we're working with the city to clean that up as well. And then today, uh we found another homeless encampment over at nine hundred Pippen Waiters Road off the tracks. That individual was previously trespassed. As you know, we give one warning at the second time, so we took him to jail today for trespassing on the railroad tracks. And we were able to work with the city to get that homeless encampment as well cleaned up. So actually, that's number seven for the, for the last two weeks that we were able to clean up. We're continuing our high visibility patrols at all the religious institutions and we also have an event going on this Thursday at the Holocaust Museum. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but we'll have two deputies assigned to that event from five to eight, I already spoke to Rosita, so we'll be there. We also have our burglary operational plan in place targeting auto theft and burglaries. And for the last six weeks, we've had a reduction in the city in all part one crimes, but especially burglaries and auto thefts. And that's huge because we've had some residents that reached out to myself and the city manager reference to auto thefts. And I can say over the last six weeks, we've had a reduction in all of our part one crimes, including multiple arrests for auto thefts. And what I'll talk about now is that we have a operation going on in Northwest Section, reference to the shooting we had um a couple of days ago. So what I can tell you is that we know for a fact that the suspects involved in that shooting are from Hollendale. That night, our Viper was actually able to track down that vehicle that was involved in our shooting, actually based on our L P R system. So even though we don't have as many as we'd like, which we're getting, but the ones we do have here, we're actually able to identify that vehicle fleeing the area. And based on tracking other L P Rs, we were able to identify that vehicle. Our Viper unit went to Hollendale that night and we were able to locate the vehicle. Unfortunately, we couldn't get the suspects, but our crime lab uh took possession of the vehicle and they're obviously testing the entire vehicle for DNA. So we're still working on that, we don't have the results back yet, but we have that vehicle in custody. And hopefully, we'll get a hit on any DNA from the vehicle that we can link the shooting to on that. So to talk a little bit more about the operation we're working on Northwest Section, I brought our C S T Sergeant. Um obviously Sergeant Seapod, he's in charge of our crime suppression team and he is um handles all of our violent crime in the city. So he'll talk a little bit about what we have going on.
Good evening, how are you? So in response to the increases in shootings, we've partnered up with our federal and local partners to include the A T F, D E A. Hollywood Police, Fort Lauderdale Police and Hollendale Beach Police. We've determined that uh the shootings are tied to the Hollywood Beach Boardwalk shooting that happened on Memorial Day Weekend. And it's been retaliation back and forth between those groups. Um we've increased our presence in the area to deter and apprehend people who are there for with malicious intent. Um like the captain said about two hours ago, we did a traffic stop literally right over there by the parking lot. And one gentleman had a stolen firearm on him, so we're getting guns off the streets. Which word of mouth will get out and people will pick a place that is not so proactive. To do their bad things. But um we have detectives in the city seven days a week uh with our operation. So there's no banker hours, weekends off, there's boots on the ground every single day of the week. In order to address this and to quell the violence.
I hope that answers the questions.
Vice Chair first, I'll go, Commissioner Davis next.
So, not about that operation, but I heard you mention juveniles several times uh that were arrested with firearms. How old are the juveniles generally?
Generally between fifteen and seventeen.
Okay, do we know if they're from the city or are they from outside the city?
They are normally from the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
And that was my question, um basically, I know that um homicide is the second leading cause of death amongst youth. And so um to be able to be proactive in having those uh groups looked at. Uh but I also wanna look at prevention methods as well, so uh thank you for your work in doing this.
Absolutely. And, and I can say, first of all, thank you very much, cause myself and Commissioner James had a long conversation. And Commissioner James, obviously from that neighborhood, she's, she's invested in that area and, and we speak all the time about the issues in that area. And we had a heart-to-heart talk on, on Sunday, um and she told me she's scared to let her son go to the park. And, and to me, that breaks my heart and. I wish I could tell you, I can promise you, I, I can stop everything, I can't, but I can promise this commission and everyone that we do everything in our power. To, to get these individuals, get the guns off the street, arrest them, we have the best hardest-working deputies in Broward County here in the city. And as you can tell, I mean, we got five firearms in two days off our streets and we won't stop. Um I'm hoping we can get these guys in custody from Hollendale who did the shooting and I appreciate your support, obviously. And, and I really do, and we, we, on top of that, we're working with Cassie at the city, we'll have a deputy at the park going forward. So if that hopefully will alleviate some worry for our children going to the park, we'll have a deputy there when, at the rec center, when kids are at the rec center, we will have someone there. Cause I want everyone to feel safe going to our park, that is so important. And when I spoke to the city manager, that was echoed by her, obviously, the youth feeling safe going to our parks is number one for all of us. Um and, and should never be in this city, anywhere in this country, but especially in Dana Beach, no one should ever be scared to have a kid going to a park. It's unacceptable to me and my team and we'll do everything in our power to keep the park safe.
If I may, through, through the mayor, um it's, it's important to, to say, and, and unfortunately, but. Um we put in place an, an active shooter training. You know, it, it's sad that we have to have this, this type of training, but this active shooter training, we started it three years ago. Um through our H R team and um that day, when the shots were fired. That training and, and the staff that was there, the entire team at the park, at C W Thomas Park. Was able to secure all the kids, bring all the kids inside and this partnership between Parks and Recreation and H R and the training. And our relationship with um our captain and the rest of the team, um and those proactive efforts, um. We are going to continue to do whatever it takes to make our city the safest it can be. And we're gonna have a zero tolerance in regards to, to, to crime and, and violence in our city.
And I can say the L P R system is going to help tremendously. That's a tool that, like the city manager said, it will be able for us to track every vehicle coming in and every vehicle coming out. And it does so much more than that, but that's just on the basics of what it does, but we can map when we have crimes. And we can go off these systems and see what vehicle pinged where, then we have another crime, we can see, we can map those same vehicles, well, did it ping here too? And that way, then Sergeant Seapod and his team come together and they start pulling the tags and we can map every location everywhere. Um and we can narrow down cars involved, people involved, and it's an amazing tool to have that, that once we get them in the city. You'll see that we will be able to get much more of these violent criminals into custody than we have now.
No, tha- thank you.
No, thank you. And, uh, thank you for everything that you and your team has been doing. Um, you know, it is disheartening. It is disheartening when I'm like, you know, you want to go and play. And and my son's like, uh, no, like I don't want to go and play. And so it's it's very important because not just for the kids that go to the park, but we have events there. We have summer camps there and, um, unsafe environment impacts everything that we are doing. It impacts our programming, it impacts who comes out. Um, and so I and and I did see an officer actually out of his car walking by the playground today. Um, and so thank him for that. But I I I do want to see if we can get with, um, I'm I'm not sure who would be in charge of it, but there are school buses that come at different times, all the way up until five o'clock. And so I know that there's an officer on that back road, kind of where everything happened like earlier. But there are schools that that actually get out later. Um, and so if if we could see the times of of the different schools that our our students go to, and so they can have that. Um, because I I know that one of them may or may not have something to do with individuals that were on a school bus. And so I I definitely want to make sure that, uh, the school buses and the kids that are on there are safe as well.
Once I get the times, we'll make sure we have deputies there because we've had someone there the whole time now. And that's going to continue. We're not, this is not going to go away. So once I get the times, we'll narrow it down. I'll actually have a spreadsheet that we can give to our deputies and let them know what time the buses are going to arrive.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Sergeant, for your presentation. We definitely appreciate your relentless leadership and the department's proactive efforts in preventing crime in our city. Thank you very much. Up next, we have Chief Sergio Pelisser, our fire chief.
Feel like I'm a track bee. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and the great citizens out there in Dana Beach. Uh, this evening, I want to tell you about, uh, Built to Rescue. That's a TNT motto. So that's the jaws of life. You know, everybody knows that fire trucks and you see it on movies. We carry the jaws of life in case we ever have to go out there and, you know, open up a car as somebody's trapped. So we're currently doing our tool maintenance on all our tools and equipment that's used to extricate somebody out of a car. Besides the the fact that we check them out daily, every single day, we open up these tools. We check them out, make sure they run, make sure they're ready to go in the morning. Besides that, every day, once a year, um, TNT Company comes out to our fire station seventeen. They set up an assembly line. And you, if you went out there in the mornings over the next couple of days, you would see that this, it looks like a factory out there. They take our tools, they take them apart, put them back together. They go through their hydraulics, they go through all the, um, bushings, they go through all the overings, make sure that everything is back to, you know, factory standards and it meets all the qualifications that we need in case we ever have to save somebody's life. So I think that's some something very important that you you all need to know about and our citizens need to know about, that we, you know, take care of our tools on a yearly basis and on a daily basis. Uh, earlier today, I spoke with, uh, Colin Donley and, uh, we are both monitoring grants. The Safer Grant, which is the staffing for adequate emergency response. And that goes towards, uh, staffing our fire trucks, which I spoke to you about last month. And we're also monitoring another, uh, grant that's called Assistance to Firefighter Grant. And that one would be basically to help us, um, with some money for our, uh, upcoming EOC project. Uh, recently, we, uh, promoted a bunch of, uh, captains in our BSO organization, captains on the fire rescue side. So anytime we promote somebody, we make sure we put, we take them off the line for eighty hours for two weeks. And we basically go over everything. I mean, these guys put in endless hours, you know, through training, going through firefighter, going through lieutenant ranks, going when they get promoted captains. They've put in a bunch of hours just on their own training and studying to prepare themselves to be leaders, uh, um, on the fire truck. So we take them off duty and we train them or reinforce, you know, high rise, how to fight high rise fires, how to lead a fire crew in a, um, high rise, how to lead a fire crew in the fire. Uh, we teach them and make sure we go over their report writing, what we expect of them and how to properly write a report. And then we also make sure that they're reviewing the the show them how to properly review a rescue report. Because, you know, they know how to write the rescue reports because they were recently promoted from lieutenant. But now they have to review those rescue reports to make sure that everything's accurate. So, um, with that, I just like to, uh, end with, uh, we participated in the Martha Luther King Parade. That was awesome and fun. And then this weekend, we have the, uh, vintage motorcycle, um, event coming up. Any questions?
Questions?
No, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, before we get to citizens' comments, uh, I'm going to amend the agenda and move up item thirteen point one. Uh, Born Learning Trails. This is sponsored by Commissioner Davis. You said the presenter's here, Commissioner? Okay, so we'll start with you and what are the presentations?
Yes, um, hi Amelia. Um, I just wanted to do a quick introduction. Um, we all know Rebuilding Together as our partners, uh, and refacing and landscaping our homes. Uh, I met Amelia through Rebuilding Together and she works for United Way of Broward County, uh, who's also working with us and invested in our affordable housing project with City Place right behind City Hall. And she, uh, and Rita from Rebuilding Together came and approached me with just an amazing creative idea. Uh, sat down with the city manager and the parks director and we had a meeting. So, uh, she is here to present that information to you today. Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Davis, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Thank you for having me. Um, as Commissioner Davis said, my name is Amelia Valer Moshi. At United Way of Broward County. Um, and thankfully, through Rebuilding Together Broward, we, um, joined forces with City of Dana Beach. And I met Commissioner Davis, um, with an idea that United Way has and that they implement worldwide. Um, and that is called Born Learning. And what that is, is we believe, uh, as United Way people, um, that learning never ends. Um, but it also starts with the parent. Um, and we say that the parent is the first educator. Learning never stops and every moment is a teachable moment. So what we have, um, is a awareness campaign for early learning, early childhood. It's called Born Learning Trails. And what that is entails is a series of signs and prompts that we would display in multiple languages, um, in parks across Broward. Um, and we are bringing this to the city of Dana Beach first, since you guys are our first city. Um, and so we want to give this opportunity to you all first. And so what it entails is a volunteer event, community service for the children, and installing these signs with the help of Rebuilding Together Broward in a park. Um, our our idea is to start at Two D Adler first. Um, and then work our way through, you know, once we complete that successfully and you guys like it and would like some more, and then replicate that process through other parks if you would like that. Um, and so we, it's a simple project, but it is a space enhancing project. It provides opportunities for families as they're walking through a park to have, you know, mind brain stations. So you know, we have our exercise stations where you go and you're working out your physical health. What we're looking here is to have a parent walk with their child and work on educational concepts. What colors do you see? What sounds do you hear? Explain those to me. Can you show me the shapes that are identified here? Um, so there are different learning prompts, um, on these signs that parents can walk through with their child and work on, um, as they go and enjoy your wonderful, beautiful parks that you have here at Dana Beach.
You you have video? Okay, great.
This is an example of a born learning trail that was installed in another county.
Hey, guys, welcome back to United News. I'm Angie with United Way of Hernando County. And we are here today at our gorgeous Hernando Park in downtown Brooksville, installing our fifth Born Learning Trail sign. Uh, special thank you to our corporate partners over at Aldi for sponsoring this trail. And I don't know if you could see behind me, but we have some awesome dedicated volunteers out here installing it, um, putting in the posts and painting so many of the sidewalks. We're literally beautifying this park.
Hi, I'm Nikki with Hernando County Parks and Recreation. We're here at beautiful Hernando Park in downtown Brooksville, installing the fifth Born to Learn Trail. Our goal over the next two years is to have a Born to Learn Trail in every park in Hernando County. So we are very excited to partner with United Way in these projects and we look forward to working with United Way in future projects.
And for those of you who aren't familiar with our Born Learning Trails, they're designed to encourage parents and caregivers to come on out to the parks and really engage with their younger children. Using the data that we found, uh, United Way Worldwide put together these these interactive trail signs. And so as you can see, this one here, um, see, say, point, read, try this, point to the letters painted on the ground, say the sound each letter makes. We encourage you to come on out and really incorporate, um, your time out here at the park and engage with your kids. So as you can see, we're starting off with the ABCs and incorporating it all the way down. Uh, in the back way over there, there's this really nice hopscotch trail. Um, and then a lot of the other signs scattered throughout the park all say something different. Some of them, uh, encourage you to talk about your family or listen to the birds. And it all gets their cognitive skills, um, up and going, especially for the younger ones. This is all in thanks to our United Way Early Literacy Initiative. And we're out here. Um, as Nikki had stated, we're we're really determined to have a Born Learning Trail installed in every park here in Hernando County, and it's all for you, community. So as always, thank you for living united.
I also wanted to add that for the first handful of parks that United Way Broward County, uh, trails that United Way Broward County will do at parks, we will foot the bill for that. And then after that, so it will be free to the city of Dana Beach. Um, and then after we establish the first few, then we would look for corporate sponsorships, which we all already have a few in waiting.
I have a question. So the signs, are they generic or can we make them a little more, uh, particular to Dana Beach? Especially if you do it on Two D Adler Park, you know, because you're on a beach instead of an actual like green park.
So the signs are already created by United Way Worldwide. They're not, what I can adjust is kind of right here, this blank space. I can a- ask them to add some.
Trail tip?
Some, um, yeah, exactly. Add but underneath it, I can ask them to add something here. Uh, we also want to include the logos. We want City of Dana Beach's logo and also Rebuilding Together Browards, since they'll be helping us through the install. Um, I can ask them if there's any further edits we can make to the content itself, but I have not seen that as an option.
Like you said, listen to the birds, could we listen to the waves?
Ah, that's true. Yeah, that's true. Mm-hmm. We did have a suggestion by Parks and Rec, um, to have a QR code and offer the in the translation of the language on the signs in different languages. Um, especially, we have it in Spanish, they already have it in Spanish, but have it in French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Russian as well. So that's something that we're going to look into.
Uh, Vice Mayor Lawell?
Yeah, I thi- think it's a great idea. Um, I just, my only question is timing. Um, we have parks that are being worked on now. It's, I just don't, uh, I know that they're covering the bill for it, but to put it in now and we're redoing our parks, I just don't, I I'm just, I'm just concerned about timing. I don't want to like do it and then have to take it down and then redo it again and.
I think we're starting with Two D Adler though, right?
Is that where you're going to start? Okay, if you're going to start with one that's already done, I missed that part.
Yeah, we, you know, we had this great meeting and we included Cassie, of course, our Director of Parks and Recreation. And basically, you know, it's free, which I love that word.
Mm-hmm. Me too.
And 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 it's and it's a great project because, like, um, she mentioned, education is something that you could do subtly and you could do all the time. So it's it's a win-win for the city. They bring out volunteers and we could, um, pick a a date that we could just go out there and make it happen and and claim it as the first in in Broward County.
That's fine.
Great. Commissioner James?
Yes, um. Who's responsible for the maintenance? I see a lot of paint going on the ground. And and we we do have issues sometime, um, with graffiti and things of that nature. And then with salt water, I don't know if the signs are going to get messed up, so.
Correct. And we've discussed different materials for the posts, wood versus metal, metal versus wood, what would be best for a beach location. Um, and so we're going to be working with Park and Recs on identifying which is pref- preferred for them, getting that material. And as far as maintenance, we have a team of volunteers always at the ready. Um, and we are always anxious to have volunteer events. Um, and so, um, I have through various initiatives at United Way and then also our volunteer base, um, the ability to say, hey, guys, we're going to go do a a a re-up. You know, we're going to go do a tune up, put a fresh coat of paint on the sidewalk. And so we will take that on and do regular maintenance if needed.
Okay, and then just, um, one final thought as someone who has a a child that's always hurt and injured, um, to make sure the wood is some type of sealed if you decide to use wood. So we don't have splinters, uh, for the kids.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Davis?
I just want, because we we did have that conversation about the wood. So I think that we decided that that wouldn't be the best kind of material for the beach. And so we were going to use some kind of, um, resistant, saltwater resistant material and not use the wood. So I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Lawell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Ralph, could I get a charger up here? Commissioner Davis?
No.
Oh, you're done? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to consent agenda, I mean, citizens' comments. And we will start with David Reich. Mr. Reich, if you could please come up and state your name and address.
David Reich, forty one sixty one Southwest Twenty Second Avenue, Dana Beach, Florida. Good evening. Broward County Government built a bus depot on Raven, Ravenswood Road, according to ordinance section one ten dash two ninety in Dana Beach. Academy Bus wants to build a bus depot on Ravenswood Road, not according to ordinance section one ten dash two ninety in Dana Beach. The city should be fair and consistent in enforcing Dana Beach ordinances. Academy Bus designs a bus depot to maximize parking, not caring about the impact to neighboring properties or Dana Beach ordinances. The city development department is supposed to balance business development and the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Dana Beach and the character of the neighborhood, which which they have failed to do. The Academy Bus Depot needs to have vehicle access from collector roads, of which two are available, not from local roads. The storage of buses must be screened from view of any public street, which they will not be. The Commissioners of this city took an oath to support the laws and ordinance of the city of Dana Beach and faithfully perform the duties of the office. Please do this. I am not against Academy Bus using their property for a bus depot. I am against Academy Bus impacting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, character of the neighborhood, and value of neighboring properties by not com- 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 uh, by not com- compromising and redesigning the site to accomplish this. Please take the time to listen, understand, and work with the applicant, impacted neighbors, and city development to create a compromise. I was inspired to address you about this by watching all Commissioners at a recent Commissioner meeting perform a beautiful compromise concerning an ad in a newspaper. Please help in doing the same with this situation, a compromise. Thank you. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Reich. Thank you for your comments tonight. Up next, we have Conrad Taylor. Conrad Taylor? Yep, there you are, sir. Please state your name and address.
Conrad Taylor, thirty one thirty five Southwest Fiftieth Street, Dana Beach. I've met the Commissioners on different levels, at different events all over. Been a resident for about twenty seven years. I lived in the forgotten finger of Dana Beach and now the construction zone of hell.
I lived in the forgotten finger of Dania Beach and now the construction zone of hell. We have more construction trucks on Griffin Road than I've ever seen before. Can't get in or out of my complex with ease. Let alone they're sneaking in through the back of Hollywood and coming down there, destroying our road, 31st Avenue. Back and forth since 6:00 AM in the morning, I start lining up down the street. Our Publix can't even get the trucks in there to unload and load. Let alone the drainage in this area has been flooded twice. It flooded once during no-name storm Irene. There wasn't construction at that time. The owner of the property, Charlie, had made sure the drain system was cleared out. And when the trailer park cleared out at Cocoa Plum, he made sure there was a culvert there to drain back to Dania Beach Cut Off Canal. All the kind of lakes around the area, including the one back behind, the medical examiner's offices are connected, except for the one that's in the estates of Fort Lauderdale. The city of Dania Beach accessed. And I think they incorporated the estates of Fort Lauderdale not long ago. It's now on your property. It's part of the city of Dania Beach. Recently, the Lennar Corporation has started construction there. The culvert now is totally blocked from our lake and the crossover. We're expecting that road to be flooded out again. We had three and a half feet of water. Our sidewalk has been destroyed twice. They've patched it. We have our now accessed road to the side. Our emergency sidewalk has trashed. Our swale has trashed. The dust cloud that's in there has covered every one of our vehicles. It's hard to breathe outside. You have to have a mask on. They start at about quarter to six in the morning. Your ordinance says they should start at seven. We've had the police out there so many times. We have residents calling left and right. I used to be on my board of directors. I had to resign because of the craziness. Not because of our board, but because none of them want to attend any of the commission meetings and/or what was going on in our neighborhood. Right now, I'd like the commissioner to turn around and look at all the buildings that's in the area. We've got an eight-story building that's down there. That just got recently built. Construction trucks in and out of the road. They're blocking that roadway. Now we have 31st Avenue. That's blocked in and out. The road is covered. We're gonna have a flood on our houses. They're refilling the lake. They run the pumps all night. They have no idea how the drainage works there. Lennar, we had code enforcement, we called them so many times. They gave me a number to construction company. They don't want to answer calls. I've asked them since before the meeting started to look into this. They're looking at us like ghosts. They don't answer calls back. I don't know what to do. I'd like the commissioner to look into this and find out what we can do. I mean, it's a natural lake. Now it looks like a natural sinkhole. I don't know what to say, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. We really do appreciate you coming out tonight and presenting your comments. And we have listened to them. And we'll do what we can for you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks. I hope you can do something for me. I don't want to have my house underwater.
Up next, we have Robert Mikes. Mr. Mikes, please state your name and address.
Bob Mikes, 601 Northwest 7th Street, Malaluka Gardens.
Please say in the mic, sir.
Bob Mikes, 601 Northwest 7th Street, Malaluka Gardens. I was a city commissioner here for 16 years. I'm wearing my Centennial shirt. I'm one of the two that are still alive from Centennial. And one of the things I want to bring up, we're losing a lot of ex-mayors and people who have experienced in this city. I hear the police reports and I haven't been in here in a while, but it brings back memories. It's changed, but it hasn't changed much. And the same thing with building and flooding. The one flooding thing, and we're not really, I didn't hear it addressed hardly, except for that last speaker, is we are on the verge of really serious flooding and it's coming from everywhere. And I've been head of environmental groups for umpteen years. I got a wall full of plaques from them. And you've got some, almost everything, when you're talking planning your parks and everything, you almost have to do short-term planning because you just don't know what's coming. There's a section of the Antarctic that NOAA says is gonna let loose in the next five years, could give us two to three-foot sea level rise like that. So anybody that thinks you got flooding now, you know, and this is NOAA. I mean, they got more satellites up there and they track this stuff like you wouldn't believe. So, you know, I just, when you review plans, you just have to take into the sea level rise because it's coming. And the scientists are 98%. I don't care what. And the oil companies just had that COP28 meeting and we need them to cut back oil production. They're doing the opposite. They're more production. So what's that gonna do for it? It's only gonna make the situation worse. What I wanted to talk about was we've lost a lot of mayors and officials in this city. And I see that you've got something coming up for someone who was a mayor for a period of time. And excuse me, not a mayor, but a commissioner. You need to get more information from these people before they pass away. They have a lot of information on the past. And the past tends to repeat itself. But like that plaque out front, I can, you know, I helped put that plaque up there because of when Jeb Bush was governor, he used to come down here personally and we'd march on these drug houses. And I hate to see that I'm hearing comments like, you got problems. I did a lot with Bobby Grace to change the zoning code and some of the, and we got some really nice homes built in some sections around what was Modello. And they couldn't, they wouldn't let us build them. They only wanted to repeat with section eights. And we finally found a way to beat that because the state said, no, you had to let them build all this junk housing. And we stopped them. But anyway, I thought that was improving and I'm hearing comments, you're still having drug problems. And then we've got open borders coming. An article in the paper about Venezuela problems, but we have no border control.
Could you please wrap it up, Mr. Mikes?
All right. I'm asking you to try to get information. You want to call yourself the historic city? And by the way, that was my suggestion for the name because it used to be Watch Us Grow. You need to get information from these people before they die. And you're not doing it. So if you want to call yourself the historic city of Broward County.
Thank you, Mr. Mikes. I gotta be fair to everybody, so I can't give you any more time. But it is a pleasure to have a former mayor of Dania Beach come up here and address the commission. We do appreciate it.
I'm trying to help. With 16 years of background, and I guarantee you, I never cut anybody off when I was mayor, several times.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Mikes for coming in here, taking time out of your night. We have heard your comments and we will definitely take them into consideration. Up next, we have Paul Citro. Paul Citro, please state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, city staff, and citizens of Dania Beach. My name is Paul Citro. I've been a resident of Dania Beach for 28 years at the same address. I've often attended the city commission meetings online. I decided to come here tonight to speak with you in person about a very important issue. Yesterday, over 50 people were killed. This adds to a total of over 25,000 who have been killed since October 7th. I'm not saying they died. They were killed by bullets, shells, and bombs. I guess you know where this is. This is in Gaza. They say there's a war going on in Gaza, but I don't think so. Most of the people being killed are noncombatants, women, children, elderly. I think it would be more accurate to call it a massacre. This is brutal, cruel, and unnecessary. I want to see the end of this slaughter. Don't you? Don't you want to see the end of this? So what can we do about it? I think if more of us raise our voices and protest, it will help. Maybe we can stop the killing. The more of us that do it, the better. So why am I speaking with you, the city commission of Dania Beach? It's because another city took action, the city of San Francisco. On January 9th, the city council of San Francisco passed a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire, aid to Gaza, and a release of all of the hostages. Here it is. Here is the text of their resolution. I offer it to you if you'd like to see it. What I'm asking is that the city of Dania Beach pass a similar resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire and aid to the suffering people of Gaza. Let it not be said that when innocent people were dying, that we remained silent. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Citro. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate your comments. Okay. Up next, we have Vivek Golikari.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vivek Golikari. Address 301 Southeast 3rd Street. I want to discuss an idea I have to create something similar to cops or friends at the library to deal with court enforcement, public nuisance. Citizens and patrol works with the police. Friends at the library works with the library. I would like to create a group of volunteer citizens cooperating with court enforcement to keep a watch on violations and report them to the authorities. Of course, we don't have the authority to enforce anything, but private citizens should get involved, working with the city. Another idea I have is that we need night shifts as well as day shifts for court enforcement because so many violations happen at night. Noise pollution, LED lights, whatever. And you can't expect them to work off the clock. They have to be with their families at night. If there's a night shift and a day shift, some can handle problems in the daytime, others in the nighttime. They've done a great job under the sun. Now we need to have them under the moon. Thank you. God bless. And I'm happy to be here.
Thank you, Vivek. We really appreciate you coming out tonight. We appreciate your comments. Definitely been heard. Next, we have Glenn Staub. Please state your name and address, Glenn.
Mayor, could I have the other one, Chris Moore from Broward, go first?
Sure. I have Chris Moore. Name and address, please, Mr. Moore.
Hey, everyone. How you doing? My name is Chris Moore. I'm here tonight representing Broward Shipyard. We're located at 750 Northeast 7th Avenue in Dania Beach. I've operated Broward Shipyard in good standing with the city since 2011. For those of you that don't know where Broward Shipyard is located, it's along the Dania Cut Canal. Right, it's the old Broward Marine, Broward Yachts, right next to, all the marinas in that range are there. You know, we have Marine Max, we have Powell Brothers, who've been a long time in the city of Dania Beach. I say, you know, directors and Dania Cut Super Yacht. I have recently been meeting with both the BSO and the Broward County Fire Department. And they had suggested that I come and speak with you guys to make you aware of a concern that we have in that area of Dania Beach. You know, I'm not sure, certain if you guys have, are aware of what's going on there or have seen what's over there. But it actually has started to become a big safety concern and a huge bottleneck over there. As you know, once the new runway came in, there was, the road was rerouted. There's literally one way in and one way out. There's a, there's a specific business that operates over there at 760 Northeast 7th Avenue. They bring in various types of cargo, large machinery, different kinds of gases and tankers and overused that particular area of the city of Dania Beach. Our concern is basically the danger it brings upon us and the safety. Now, the discussions I've had with both BSO and the fire department is the ability or the inability to get fire trucks in there, emergency vehicles in there, and how they can get when there is truly an emergency. I met with BSO specifically this afternoon about this. They witnessed the blockade of trucks and other types of these vehicles that are in the way. The stopping, the standing, the waiting, and their inability or lack of, you know, interest of leaving the public roadways. So what I, what we're here asking is for you guys to be more, to recognize more of what is going on in that area. We will continue to communicate with both the fire department and the sheriff. But it's something that we would love for you guys to understand what is going on there if you don't already understand what's going there. So we wanted to come here and voice that concern as a business that has been operating and brings those from outside the city and outside of, you know, even the state into this area to promote further business and brings jobs and more to this area. So I thank you for your time. I appreciate it. If anyone has, if there's any questions?
Actually, Mr. Moore, the traffic is mainly just industrial traffic. It's all industrial over there. So.
It is industrial.
This is from the other businesses.
It is. It is industrial, but when it becomes where it blockades the road, and since they actually have expanded further to the FPNL easement underneath the power lines there, which is just across from Director's facility. So they have taken over that parking lot now for their staging area. So they have now further blocked, they have blocked down Taylor Lane. And you have 7th Avenue coming in, all converging on that corner at the entranceway to the property that I'm a tenant in.
Okay.
So yes, it is industrial traffic. And industrial traffic, they have a right for, to do their business as well, just like everyone else does. But when they come to block the public right of way, when it comes to a safety issue, when they're blocking the public right of way and they cannot, and no one else can get in or out because they feel it's their right to be there, that's when it becomes a problem for all the other surrounding businesses there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate your comments and we'll definitely look into this. You know, as you know, that's a part of Dania. A lot of people don't even know that's in Dania. All right. It's on the other side, so you definitely, I guess you got a good suggestion to bring that to our attention because now we can look into it more. All right. Next, we have Glenn Staub. Glenn, please state your name and address.
Glenn Staub, 960 Taylor Lane. We really represent all five marinas, do over $50 million worth of business a year in that area. I think a lot of Dania is dependent on some of that business. They have over 100 employees all the time. And we have over 100 boats and repairs and everybody gets parts and they get gasoline, they get food. So we have a few people that have interest in that part of Dania. I'm not here as a suitsayer, but some of the things that are going on there, you're not prepared for, I don't think. The, all the propane for the whole Bahamian Islands that I know of, which I visit, if one, and there might be five over there right now, could level half of Dania right now. Level you because not counting what they've done under Florida Power and Light by being added to it, that when a propane tank goes off, it's 22,000 pounds, or I'm sorry, 22 tons, you don't know if it's gonna go right, left, or up and take out the power lines. If you take the power lines out, you take South Florida out. So I don't want to be a suitsayer, but you can look at this whole thing that the traffic is an issue for trying to maintain that kind of money for our businesses, which is very clean. You know, we do everything environmentally safe. We're inspected by everybody. The chief and also the sheriff's department, we work with them. We have a small army down there. We have 25 large yachts and 100 small. But those people are a, they're soldiers because they're trained how to fight fires and things of that nature. But you can't even get a emergency car into this back area. You could not get a fire department, a fire truck back there. It's, the example is that if you have a gallon jug and you fill it all the way to the top of the gallon jug, and now you try to pour in a pint more, what happens? It overflows into everything. And that's exactly what's happening to Taylor Lane and for 750 Southwest Avenue. So I can answer questions, but basically you're working, we're trying to work with your fire department and with the police department. But likewise, there is a danger there. And I'd hate to have my employees lose their life. It's bad enough. We have airplanes taking off and putting soot over everything. But that's a separate issue that we're trying to clean up with the court systems. Right now, we're just looking at the safety and trying to get. Right now, we're just looking at the safety and trying to get, it's an overburden. I've been there 25 years, and it's just kept growing and growing and growing. It grew outside of its limitation. And so right now, hundreds of trucks go in, they back up, they back out on 750. You can't get into our five marinas. And I would answer any questions if there's any.
Thank you, Mr. Stroh. Definitely appreciate your comments. And yeah, we're definitely going to look into this. Okay, that's it for citizen comments. But before we move on, I'd like to have our right-hand man, Deputy Manager Candido Sosa Cruz, just to address a few of these comments that he's heard, just to give you guys some accurate answers to keep you updated on where we stand with these issues that you brought before us.
Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. Mayor, you referring to the code violations and the 31st Avenue? Definitely. Our code compliance team has been monitoring this project now for over a month. Every morning at 6:00 in the morning, our code officers are there, present. If they need any assistance from BSO, they call BSO. We've cited the development already for four violations, which include early start, includes a messy sidewalk, messy street, and includes two noise violations. We will continue to be there at 6:00 in the morning. Every time a resident or anyone calls us, we call them back. We meet up with them. We follow up. If they have video, emails, text messages, we respond to all of them. We are, we are in constant communication with the developer, with the owner of the project. As a matter of fact, they had a, an item on the agenda tonight, and that item had to be removed because of the code violations. As of last Thursday, there have not been any violations. The owner is meeting with all his subcontractors to notify them about, one, the complaints, two, our codes, three, what time they can start construction, and our noise ordinance. So we are completely, 100%, hands-on, not only on this construction project, but on all construction projects. As far as flooding, Commissioner Salvino has contacted us several weeks ago. As far as cleaning out the drains, cleaning the ditch, we had machine out there removing all the mud, broken branches. We had cleaning the pipes that come out of Cocoa Plum. Yeah, Cocoa Plum, I believe, is the project to the north of it. And, and we will continue to clean the ditch. We will continue to ensure that flooding is addressed and is minimized, mitigated as much as possible. Mayor, you know, because you have taken the lead working with South Florida Water Management and understanding what is causing the flooding in our city. Not only is it the intense amount of rain coming down in a short period of time, not only is it king tide, but it also has to do with the water from the canals and how much water gets released or how fast they lower the canal, or how much they lower the canal. So it is not just one development or two development. Is, and to address what the other gentleman stated, sea level has a major impact on where we live. So it's a combination, and it's a comprehensive approach that the city is working with the county, with the Chief Resilient Officer of Broward County, with all the other agencies, the Army. I'll say this, Mayor, I know you don't like saying it, but you just went to Washington DC to meet with the Army Corps of Engineer specifically to address our canals due to the flooding. So when, when people might not know what we do behind the scenes, but we don't stop addressing all the issues that Dania Beach faces. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Candido. Deputy Manager Sosa Cruz. Yes, our flooding issue, you could look at it from a micro standpoint where it comes to, yeah, cleaning out the drainage to a macro standpoint to how the South Florida Water Management District disperses the water based on the height of the levees and the canals, you know, into Dania Beach. So it's a very complex issue. We're definitely, I feel like detective is what I say because we're trying to break down each piece from a micro level all the way up to a macro, up to the federal level. So we're, we're doing our best, and we're just trying to obtain answers to have information for our residents. But we're doing the best we can as a city. Some things are out of our control when it gets to the state, when it gets to the feds. So we will continue this work as a commission and as a city team. And I'm hopeful that we get more recognition and more of a chair at the table, so to speak, when it comes to South Florida and handling the wastewater that goes through Dania. All right. Next, we're going to go to item eight, the consent agenda. Are there any items the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
8.9.
Okay, item 8.9, please remove from the consent agenda. Clerk, any other items? All right, item 8.9 is removed. Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 8.9.
All right, motion approved, exception 8.9. Vice, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, now we'll bring up discussion of item 8.9.
It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Alpine Towing, Inc. for towing services in the city of Dania Beach, providing for conflicts and an effective date.
Commissioner James?
Yep, oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have several issues or concerns regarding this item. The first issue I have that is under consent agenda, and I believe we recently, within the past year or so, discussed an item similar to this. And so if there are going to be any changes, I, I wasn't privy to it. And so I don't believe that it should go on consent agenda. But I do want to know why this is being brought forward right now.
I, I can answer that. So the city code in 2021 was changed, and the Code of Ordinances provides that there is a, a rolling list or a rotating list regarding towing services. And according to the code, anyone can apply to become a towing service. So there was, for example, I think a year ago, maybe, I don't know, maybe a little bit more than a year ago, somebody did apply, but there was something wrong with the background check, and so that application was withdrawn. Another person contacted the city and said, I'd like to provide towing services. HR and BSO did their background searches. There was no violations found, no issues. It went up through the BSO Command. They had no objections, and so it was put on the agenda. It was that simple.
So every, every applicant that's a tow company that applies?
They can be put on a list.
Is going to be put under consent for us to vote on or discuss?
Well, it, what it says here is that we are to have, maintain a rotating list for towing services, and that the manager shall approve to be placed on the list of wrecking or towing service which meets the qualifications, and this company meets the qualifications. So the contract would have to come to you. Now, it doesn't have to be in consent. I could put under another, I could put under bids and request for proposals because we just did that modification, and I could do that going forward. But if somebody applies and they meet the minimum criteria, they can be placed on the list. And we can only use towing services that are on our list.
Okay, and would these towing services from, I believe, Alpine Towing, that is the applicant, they would automatically rotate with our current towing that we have?
According to the code, it would. It's Section 20-48 as to wrecker towing services, which are on the approved list. The Chief of Police is directed to adopt a plan so that the calls are rotated on an even and equitable basis amongst the eligible services on such approved list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that information. My issue that I have with Alpine Towing and who are current, which is Max Towing, and what we have is, number one, how, how long would that contract be with Alpine?
It would be the, sorry, it's the same length. I believe they're both three years?
Three years?
With extensions.
Okay, and I, I think I want to go back and amend the code because I don't, I don't like that part of the code. I looked at their contract. A lot of the things that we currently receive from our current tow company, Alpine would charge us for it, including all of the BSO vehicles and the maintenance to those.
They would be, they would be required to be free, just like the other one.
So every, every single thing would be free, including?
The same way that, it's the same contract that Max signed. It's the same exact contract.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it as such. Okay, well, I, and where would the location be that it would be towed to?
It's within 10 miles of the city, is a requirement under the code. So let me get to the address. I'm not familiar with it off the top of my head. Give me a second.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, sir. No. Please.
I'll confirm, but I believe there, it's in Johnson Street, in Hollywood. Yes, it is. Contract is located 6230 Johnson Street, Hollywood.
Okay, and then under, under the contract, does it state that if there are any issues? So this isn't because there are any issues, per se, with Max Towing?
Absolutely, not that I'm aware of.
So solely because this was an applicant?
Yes.
And then we have the ability to either approve or deny that?
Well, if they meet the criteria, it's sort of required to approve it. And the, and the reason I say that is that the city, the Police Department shall maintain a rotating list, and the city manager shall approve and be placed on the list services that meet the qualifications, and they meet the qualifications.
Okay, well, I don't like, I don't like that. We're forced to approve something. I, I would like, I know that we have several more comments here, and I have some more questions to ask, but my, my thought would be to postpone this so we can take a look at the code, so we could possibly amend the code to something that, you know, a lot of times we pass things to the code and we don't understand the impact that it's going to have until something happens, and then we revisit the code and we amend the code to best fit what the city needs. And so I'm going to ask for a review of that portion of the code, and until that happens, to postpone any further applicants that will come from the tow company. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Davis?
I agree with that, but I do want to have a point of clarification because I do like to do the due diligence and sit down with our city attorney and city manager to review the agenda prior to the commission meeting. And it was my understanding during the review that this Alpine company could remove derelict boats or vessels and that this was not a service that Max Company, Max Towing, could, could perform. And so in my mind, I was like, well, if they're providing an additional service that, that Max Towing is not able to perform, then we would possibly need to go ahead and have those additional services. However, later I learned that this week, that two boats have been removed using Max Towing. And so there's some discrepancy in, you know, our ability to recommend a company that's going to add additional services that Max, Max Towing already provide.
We were looking for a, a company to be able to remove the boat from the water. The response was that was not possible, removing it from the water itself, having some type of water extraction, I'd say. So we worked with BSO, BSO's Marine Unit, not Dania Beach, but County BSO. They were very good to us as far as doing all this work at no charge. They were able to bring the boat from the canal, from behind someone's property, to Griffin Marine Ramp. Once it was there, Max Tow Truck worked very hard. We're very thankful for Max Company as well. We have a great relationship with them. They were able to pull the boat up the ramp, up to the flat part of the street. From there, our public services team was able to break up the boat and dispose of the boat. The second company that we're, we're referring to tonight, Alpine Towing, has capabilities of removing a boat with a crane, with a scuba diver, underwater equipment, everything to remove boats that are derelict, sunken boats, boats halfway underwater directly from where they're at, without having to do everything we did. Now, there is a cost to that. So, and providing a little bit of history, the reason that this code was amended in 2021 was because there was, our expectations weren't being met as far as having one company doing all the services, meaning there was debris on the road after cars were being towed and removed. And our communication from our previous chief was that they were not happy with the service at that time. That does not mean that it's the service provided now because being able to work with them, communicate with them, and I know some internal things have changed within that company itself. And again, I want to emphasize, we have a great relationship with Mac, but I do want to provide clarity as far as why the code changed, and they changed because expectations weren't being met. And just because we have a good relationship with you does not mean we're going to lower our bar as far as the service that the city receives. Therefore, there was a second company we were going to bring in. They did not pass the criteria that we had set, and we removed them. This new company applied under the code that we have, and they meet the criteria. Now, when, when Commissioner James refers to the rotation, how it works, you determine that. You determine if it's a monthly rotation, weekly, however you would like to see it. So I just wanted to-
Just a point of clarification. Right now, the code says it is a rotating, even equitable basis, whatever that means. It could be monthly, it could be weekly.
There's no specifics as far as how it rotates. So I just want to provide clarity on why we have the current code because we never believed, the administration never believes that we should ever put our eggs in one basket because things could change through time. So if, if it's a very busy night, if there's equipment we have, we always want to have more than one company available to provide the best services. If this company ends up not providing the level of service we expect, they could be cut as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments on that. First of all, I remember a year ago when we went through this, the last company was getting ready to get passed, and we did, and the due diligence wasn't quite there. And we ended up finding out that that person had a background that did not, was not accepted to-
The, the commission denied it. I just want that to be clear.
Yeah, the commission denied it.
They didn't, they didn't just meet a background check, and then they took him off the list. No, the commission denied it.
There was a reason behind that, though. The reason that was, that it was exposed.
Okay, but yes, I just want to make that clear, that's all.
What are you trying to make clear, Mayor? I don't understand what you're trying to make clear.
The commission denied it, that's all I'm saying.
Do what?
The commission denied it. It wasn't, it wasn't because of an application process.
I'm in the middle of making my thing here, and I don't understand what you're saying. If you'd like to explain to me, then I'll, I'll back up a little bit.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm trying to explain is that when this came up for a vote about a year ago, I think it was my first commission meeting, the commission denied the request to add on an additional company.
Okay. Do you know the background on that, since it was your first meeting by any chance?
Yes, that, that came after the fact. We found, we discovered new information after, after the commission meeting. So go, go ahead, Commissioner Salvino, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I, I forgot what I was going to say. Anyhow, besides, I understand, you know, the, the administration's part about wanting something to back up, but I think that, you know, Max Towing's been around a long time, and I understand it was an issue back years ago. I, I would like to, you know, as Commissioner James says, I think maybe we should, you know, pass on this item for the night and do a little bit more background. I'd like to ask the, the chief of how many times that they've called and they haven't been there to see if they failed them at all for that purpose, number one. As far as the rotation goes, if we had to go into that, they could be used as a rotation as necessary if they don't show up. That would be a, a spot that shows that they're not, that Max wasn't able to show up. And as far as the boats go, I mean, how many boats are we going to pull out of the water? Three, four boats? I mean, so if that's an excuse to, to put another person on, to pull a boat out of water, it'd be almost, it'd almost be to a point where we'd be better off, the homeowner or the owner of the boat is, is going to be cited, whether they- The homeowner or the owner of the boat is, is gonna be cited, whether they pay it or not, it's another story. But the, the fact is, there's only three or four boats and maybe half a dozen that need to be pulled out of the water. I know it's not what the administration likes. Uh, I know that you like to do the things that you're away, that you, you feel successful. But I also have a feeling of how I like some of the things that have gone on in Dania. And I don't think that. When you have a company that's there and has done and been successful and been there forever and done a lot for the city and. It is, it is proving their point and is able to su- support the city and been able to do the job without a complaint at this point. I don't feel like we should have to put pressure against them and I, I think it's just bad business. And that's my point on this. So what I'm asking the commission to do is to reconsider this, um. This item and let us take a little bit more look or have a little bit more discussion on it if you like. And then, and then if we do do a rotation, if we have to do that, then I think the rotation should be as necessary if BSO finds it that MAC's can't show up. If we need to pull a boat out of the water, then we can call, put Alpine on as a, a boat ex- extractor on a, on a per boat basis because. I don't think there's that many boats, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Thank you. Um, I'm in agreement with you. However, I just need a point of clarification on the legal side of this because if I'm not mistaken. This bid was put in, or this application was put in under the current code. I don't know that we can go back and now say, I'm sorry, you can't do this now because we're now going to revise the code again. I, if I'm correct, am I correct, Eve?
Why don't we go ahead and table it and let me look at it and get back to you, okay?
Okay, cuz that's-
I don't wanna put us in a spot in the, in the public.
And that, and that's my concern. I, I don't wanna, I mean, if the code is what the code is.
Well, if we pass this ordinance, sorry, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor. We passed the, the resolution, well, the ordinance in twenty twenty one. We passed the ordinance in twenty twenty one.
Correct.
We didn't have, sign a contract with anybody except MAC's towing in twenty twenty three. You know, that, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanna be clear on that. We didn't have a contract for two years after we passed an ordinance.
Right.
So I don't see-
My, my concern is that there's, that there's an existing ordinance that. Usually there's an existing ordinance and you, and you have, and you're putting out something. And they put in an application under that existing ordinance, you can't then switch it and suddenly change that and change the rules. Um, at least that's been my experience, so I don't-
I think we have discretion on who we choose to do business with.
Let's table it and we can, I'll get back to you with some, uh-
Thank you.
Direction.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, and going down what the Vice Mayor just asked, I have a follow-up question with that. So if, under the law, um, we could not, um. Table this or change the ordinance because there is an application, can't we just deny it like we denied the last one? So whichever one makes it easier for you, City Attorney, is what I want.
I appreciate it. I'll get back to you all.
Thank you. So I make a motion. Oh, I have a motion already.
No, go, go ahead.
Oh, you want me to make it again?
Yeah.
Okay, um, make a motion to table.
Oh, you're in table, okay.
Or, you know what, I'll make a motion to deny. Um, eight point nine, um, as well as, um, a motion to amend the current code.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, okay. Commissioner Davis made the second, uh, to deny eight point nine and a motion to amend the ordinance. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, Commissioner Davis made the second. Okay, uh, Alora, please just call it a vote since you guys missed that. Go ahead, Alora.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino? Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Since we still need clarification, I'm saying no.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have no first or second reading ordinances. So we'll move on to thirteen, discussion impossible action. We'll start with thirteen point two. This is citywide.
You have, uh, ten.
Quasi judicial, I'm sorry.
Ten point one.
Sorry. All right, this is quasi judicial in public hearings. Item ten point one, please, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach approving the site plan and waivers pursuant to seven hundred dash one ninety of the city's. Land Development Code for Property Owner City Dania Beach for the property located at one hundred Northwest Eighth Avenue. Providing for conditions, conflicts and effective date. This is a community development item regarding the CW Thomas Site Plan.
Good evening. Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director, Community Development. This is a site plan application for the CW Thomas Park, um, and the redevelopment of that project. Um, on the screen is the location, um, of the park itself in the northwest neighborhood. I think we're all familiar with its location. Um, some background information, we've been working on this project for a long time. Several departments have done it. And you as a city commission have had some actions to prepare the site plan for today. In October, um, of last year, the city commission approved a vacation of right of way that ran through that park. Um, later in October, October twenty fourth, the city commission also approved rezoning of the western portion of the park. So now the, uh, there's a unified land parcel with one zoning designation on it. Which makes it simpler for the site plan this evening to go through. Um, the application tonight is for several, um, waivers from the land development regulations as well as site plan approval. These are not variances, they are waivers because it's a city project and the land development code allows the commission to issue waivers on city projects. Um, site plan, um, approval is for the implementation of the redevelopment of CW Thomas Park and includes. You know, all these amenities that we've discussed in the past about the expansion of the programming on the site. The waivers themselves, there are several waivers that I was just going to touch on. They're not variances, as I mentioned before, they are waivers. The first is with regards to setbacks and, um, this is because there's accessory structures. Located within the, the required setback area and it'll be as little as, um, zero feet, um, in some locations. And these include things like bleachers and scoreboards and, um, um, I think dumpsters and I think public art. There's a lot of different things, different locations located in the setbacks. The second waiver is for the building height in the zoning district. It only allows one story. Where the proposed structure for the community center itself is two stories. Building coverage is another waiver. They're asking to allow five point five percent building coverage where the. In this zoning district, a maximum of three percent is allowed. Signage is a different waiver. They're asking for, um. Um, four hundred and thirteen square feet of signage. Um, actually, that might be larger. I, I, for some reason, I think that might be up to five hundred. Um, where a maximum of three hundred was permitted. Um, light levels is also exceeding code requirements at s- specific locations. It's not consistent throughout the perimeter of the property. But, um, it's because of there's lighting on the fields and you, it's a park, so there needs to be illumination. Um, but one of the things that does, um, help assist with this lighting levels is that the, the park itself is also surrounded by a street. So we have the additional, um, distance of the street to help accommodate or mitigate some of that light spillage as well. Before it gets to the pri- to the residential parcels on the other side of the street. And then the final waiver is for the street sections. Um, typically, the code requires redevelopment that the complete streets be, um, part of a project. Um, but this project itself, the redevelopment of the park is not touching the streets. It's really just focusing on the land within the areas. And public services and everyone was acceptable of maintaining the existing conditions of the roads. So this is, um, the proposed rendering of the building. Um, that's gonna be in the, in the north, um, the northwest corner of the property. And here's the, uh, another elevation of the building itself. And as, um, hopefully we all know at this point, there was significant community outreach that occurred on the project. Um, both community workshops, um, in the neighborhood and engaged with the commission as well. It also went through, this is a site plan, so it did go through the development review process. Um, it, we had formal meetings on July and September. Um, there are outstanding DRC comments. All the tier one comments have been addressed prior to this meeting, so the remaining comments. Are listed as conditions of approval if the resolution is approved and they're identified in the site plan this evening. Um, in terms of the budgetary impact, um, the, the cost of, for the improvements of this park is part of the budget. That was previously approved by the city commission, so it has been identified in the, in the project, in the budget itself. And there will be impact fees that will be assessed on the project with regards to, um, um. Mitigation for traffic, any increased traffic that may be, um, generated by the expansion of the programming. There is an impact fee associated with each fee as well as the public art fee, which is, I know, part of the pr- um, budget for the project itself. It's already built in. Um, when we analyze the city's strategic plan, there are multiple points of, um, consistency for this project. Um, um, as identified, um, on the screen and in this staff report as well. And at this point, staff is recommending, um, approval of the project for the site plan as well as the waivers. Um, and the conditions of the DRC would be conditions of approval if it's approved by the commission this evening. And I know the applicants here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Commissioner James?
The applicant as well as the contractor, I'm sorry.
Who's the applicant? No, I don't, I have no questions. I wish I could have approved this a year ago and so we can, uh, break ground and so. Kathy, you're breaking ground tomorrow, correct? Um, but after you have public input, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve item ten point one.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anybody wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I have a motion from Commissioner James and I have a second from Commissioner Davis. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, none opposed. I'll move on to item ten point, oh wait, that's gonna be tabled, so we're going to, oh, item-
We still have to defer.
Item ten point two?
It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the site plan modification. Of Lennar Homes LLC for the property located four nine zero zero Southwest Thirty First Avenue. In the City of Dania Beach, provided for conflicts and effective date. And actually, um. Staff has asked for continuance to the March twenty six, twenty twenty four meeting. Um, and this would still be a public hearing on whether to continue it or not.
It's a public hearing. Is anybody wish to speak on this item? It's gonna be continued in March.
Make a motion to continue the item until March twenty six, twenty twenty four meeting.
You'd like to speak on this item, sir? Okay. All right, still have a motion and a second. Please come on up. Mister Taylor, correct? All right.
As I said earlier, uh, you got the clock running again. Uh, the drainage on this property and the modifications they've made have not followed through what their original plan was. The gentleman over here said they've done something and chinged out the channel that goes to Dania Cut Off. I've stood there, I've sat right next to the compactor at Publix. I haven't seen any of the public code people out there except around seven, seven thirty. I've sat out there at six o'clock in the morning quite a few times. I'd love to see that channel cleared out so the drainage would help, but they haven't modified anything to what they've said on the plans. And like I said, we've never gotten any callbacks from the construction company or anything else. We used to. When they first started construction, we got a callback saying, oh yeah, we'll quiet down, but the trucks, the noise, everything. Anything they've said, they lie to us and they'll tell you, yes, yes, we'll do this, yes, we'll do that. But to the community next door, they haven't done anything for us. So I don't know what you guys are planning next, but, uh, we're forgotten. So hopefully you do something. I mean, you guys are just gonna allow another modification? What, they're gonna flood us out even more? Or is nothing gonna be done? I mean, you quietly said to me, yes, we're gonna do something. Marco says, you know, they're looking into it. You said you met with, you know, Corps of Engineers. Corps of Engineers set the lake up a long time ago with Charlie over there for the drainage. I'm at a dead standstill now. Do I sell my home for nothing? And say the commission didn't care. They didn't care about the planes going over my head when I changed runway and they changed the access to the airport. We didn't get any soundproofing. We were forgotten. The communities across the street must all got soundproofing in the windows. The community down the street, Maple Ridge got soundproofing. No, they didn't get it either. We got forgotten. We're in Forgotten Finger, Dania. We'd like to know something might happen. Hopefully something would happen. Can I get assurance from somebody here that something will happen?
Commissioner Salvino?
Mister Taylor, I know that you're frustrated with that project. Um, you know, and I did not vote for the project to begin with. Um, it's been a, a, a disaster. You know, there's been some problems and I think that, uh. I addressed the city manager in assistance at deputy city manager today. And they, uh, they're listening to what's going on. I do know for fact, these are not misinformation, this is fact. That, um, that from my community development director, they have been fined, uh, which may not mean much to them. Um, if you know, if you know how there's rules and regulations on code works, I mean, they get fined. That doesn't mean they're gonna stop working. If they wanna go out there at six o'clock in the morning, they, sheriff can go out there and stop them, so they're gonna get fined. Their fines are accumulated, accumulating to be paying it, uh, back. Uh, whether the fines make you happy or not, it's not, it's not going to, but the fact is that they're, the city is doing everything legally that we can do. We just can't go out there and, and do certain things that you'd like us to do, but we're trying our best to, uh, to upset the apple cart so they fall. I, I believe that they're trying, I think, from talking to the city manager and, and, um, and the community development director, they are trying. And like they said the last few days, they've been, if you say you've been up there at six o'clock and you don't see code enforcement out there. And they're, and the bells are beeping at six thirty, then you need to call. And if you call, document that, and it's not being done right, then yes, then the city manager will address it and she'll address it immediately.
I've, I've sat there, watched the, I watched the policeman down there and he's talked to me a few times.
Well, if he, if he's there and he's called, then he's calling code enforcement. And code enforcement may not come out at that exact time, but the policeman notices that he'll find him as, whether it is seven or seven thirty, if he notices it, they're gonna get fined. And that's what they're working on. As far as the ditches go, uh, I asked the city manager and deputy city manager a while back in the, in the engineering department. They've gone out there and they did clean out part of the ditches. I asked them today. Uh, to do a, a better job to clean them out, to make sure that all the, uh, pipes are put back in place where they're crossing the road with the gravel on it. So that the flow of water will come all the way down, I believe even from the states of Fort Lauderdale. All the way down and go to the flow. They're gonna look into finding a way to, you know, there's a flap, maybe we can get. The keep, when the water goes out, the tide comes in, it doesn't come back in again. Uh, we're actively working on it. I know you don't see it. It's not gonna happen overnight. It may take a year. But it's gonna get done and what, before the project's done, you know, you'll see some, you'll see some change over there, but you have to be patient. I know you're upset, but it's not gonna, you can't blink your eyes, it's not gonna happen.
Well, I know, we had three and a half feet of water in there a few months ago.
I understand that, sir. And, and, but I had, I had three and a half feet of water a few months ago to my house and the rest of City Dania is under a, a major, major. Uh, you know, flood, uh, or, or, or drainage problem. We got what, how many millions of dollars are put in it? And you know, in that area out there is gonna, so I mean, everybody has a problem. We're trying our best as a city. Our, our, our staff is the best. I'll tell you right now. They work very hard, very diligently to, to try to make everybody happy, but it's very difficult to make everybody happy.
Well, we know that. I mean, it's very hard to make everybody happy. It's never gonna happen that way.
But I assure you that our, our management team, our administration is the best that's out there and I promise you that. You wanted to promise, I'm promising you that they will. Stay in touch with you and they will follow up and do the best they can.
Because we talked to the people at Cocoa Plum and the president over there thinks the city is gonna do everything for them. I said, you know, you guys yourselves have to help us out a little bit. Instead of sitting there going, huh?
Yeah, well, you, you watch, just give it, just give it some time and you'll see that, uh, things will, uh, will get better. We're perfect, I can't promise you that, but I promise you that the city will be active in it.
Yeah, cuz I looked at the plan that Lennar had and I look at what's being built out there now and I don't see any resemblance. I mean, the entranceway has moved. So many feet north, five hundred to eight hundred feet more than what they said it's gonna be.
Well, give us a shot. Let us, give us some time that if you don't see something happen the next thirty days and maybe you come back and talk to us again, how's that?
Well, that sounds good. I mean, that, as long as we get something done.
All right, well, we're working on it.
Silence is not my idea of getting something done.
Mister Taylor, we thank you for coming in tonight and, uh.
Cuz people told me I'm wasting my time coming here.
Bringing this issue directly to the commission, you know what I mean? We try and handle these problems before they even get to the commission. But some of them need to be put out in the open and you did. You voiced your concern and we hear you and like we said, we're gonna be responsive to you. So, uh, look forward to working with the city and hearing from them in the future. So we, we thank you for addressing this issue. This is an issue that the city is facing. It is an issue that code is facing.
I don't come down here to waste my time. That's my concern.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Mister Taylor. I do appreciate you.
Thank you.
And, you know, mind you, this item is being continued because they have current violations, so. Okay, I have a first and a second to continue. Item ten point two. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Onto item ten point three. Please note, Alora, item ten point two passed.
A resolution of the City Commissioner of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the request made by the Vice Mayor Llewellyn. To rename the park property located at Southeast Fifth Avenue from Southeast Tenth Street to Southeast Fourteenth Street, Dania Beach. Um. Changing the current park name from Linear Park to William Bill Harris Linear Park, provided for conflicts and effective date. This is a park and recreation item.
Parks and Rec, Vice, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I'll speak. Um, so, um, as we all know, uh, we lost a colleague, um, back in November. And he not only was a former city commissioner, former vice mayor, he was also a city employee. He was also, beyond that, an ambassador for the city, even when he wasn't in office. And even when he wasn't working for the city. Everywhere he would go, he would announce himself as Bill Harris from Dania Beach. Many of you can attest to that. I know this whole side of the room over here is, is here to support this item. And I just wanted to find a way to properly memorialize him. I felt that this was a, a good idea primarily. I know it was a park that Bill was very fond of, he walked it every day. He was very supportive of, of having a butterfly garden there and making sure the equipment was maintained and making sure it was kept up. And I think it would be a nice tribute to him to do that. We do have a number of people in the city that we can definitely do things like this for in the future. I actually have a couple of other ideas that I've been bouncing around in my head about some other individuals that I've I mentioned a little bit to the city manager about. But this is one I think is very appropriate. It is right by Bill's house. Louis still walks the park regularly with the dogs especially. And I think it would be fitting and it did pass unanimously at the Parks and Recreation Board. I am hoping for that tonight here as well. So, and, oh, and aside from just the, the individuals who were approving of this cuz that's one of the questions on the application. He met most of the criteria anyway, met more than he needed to meet for a park to be named after him or a city facility. But there were a number of people that were in favor of it. In addition to those, there was probably another couple hundred people that also approved. I don't have those with me tonight, but I know that Louis can speak to that if he wants to, but he may not want to. But I know that there was, for example, the Meadowbrook Building that's closest to the park. The entire building, they actually had a board meeting. The entire building approved it and they also approved it at their board meeting that they were in favor of this, in addition to a number of other residents in that particular area. So, that's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. I, I don't think this is something that needs a whole lot of discussion or people that are gonna go against this. Like you said, he was an ambassador. Something that used to get on my nerves a little bit cuz we would go to events and they'll ask us to put on volunteer shirts and he's like, no, I'm putting on my Bill Harris shirt. Like, no, you gotta see who I am. And he just absolutely loved the city and so and I know he did a lot of work. He advocated for it, especially that part of his city, the way I advocate for my community and where I'm from. And so, anyone who takes a brave effort to, number one, campaign in this city, it's crazy. And, and to serve this city, I, I, I think it is, it is an honor that that's the small token of our appreciation and who he was and who he has been to this city. And so I'll make a motion to approve item 10.3.
This is a public hearing. Is anybody wish to speak on this item? Come on up, sir. Please state your name and address, Mr. Mikes. I have a motion and a second on the, on the floor. And I'll entertain public discussion. Hold, hold, one second, sir.
And we also have a unit that used to belong to my mother.
Name and address, please.
601 Northwest 7th Street. But you don't realize how close that park came to never happening. And I can explain. And this is why I'm telling you, you don't have the history of Dania, you really need to get it. Because that was not a simple, that was a battle to get that. That was supposed to be a six-lane road, highway through there. And I'll tell you why. The, I was mayor at the time and there was a state legislator in Fort Lauderdale. He wanted to put a road in from crossing the Dania Canal down that Fronton Boulevard. And where you see Publix now, there wouldn't have been a Publix. It would've gone right through that and then down 5th Avenue. So I say, and there was a meeting, I represent Dania. There was someone representing Fort Lauderdale and there's somebody representing Hollywood. It took the third meeting before I asked the question, because I assumed it was gonna be a two-lane road. I asked the question, how big is this road gonna be? And they said, six lanes. Six lanes down Fronton Boulevard would really be quite a road. So I, I, I left, I left a message with the city manager, put an addendum on the meeting for next week. A resolution opposing this project. So I immediately get two calls over the weekend who I think were related to one of the commissioners asking me to take it off the agenda. They didn't wanna vote on it. I said, no, I'm not gonna take it off the agenda. So it, it was there for the vote. And I got the votes, but I, I'm gonna tell you something. This state legislator, well, I had to make it a linear park because I was very involved with the parks issues through environmental programs in the county. I, they had a hundred million dollar bond issue and I pretty much picked the sites where we were gonna acquire property, some in Dania and whatever. But it's very important that you name something a park so it doesn't go back to being a six-lane road. So, in fact, Tim Ryan worked on, because it was a real mess as far as the different easements along that road because they're all different properties. So he helped put the package together. The whole thing is a linear park from where Publix is now all the way to Sheridan Street. And I did that deliberately so they couldn't change it back to a six-lane road cuz that's been, I've seen it done too many times. You have to name it a park. Okay, so it came up for first reading. We were doing the comprehensive plan for the city.
I'll give you, you have 15 more seconds to wrap it up, Mr. Mikes.
15 more seconds?
You had three minutes. 20 seconds, please?
I cannot believe I'm, I'm explaining a project for the benefit of the audience and you don't wanna hear it.
It's okay, it's okay.
Well, I know where you're coming from and you can.
Hey, 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 order, all right? 15 seconds, please, state your case. Now, go.
Okay. So we got the city manager at the time, Mike Smith, to put it on the agenda and we're gonna vote for it as a linear park. All of a sudden, it wasn't on the agenda. So Bertino made a motion and we added it to the agenda. Then it was a linear park.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Mikes, please, come on. You had, you had your time. I have to be fair with everyone. They get three minutes. I gave you a little extra. I don't have to explain the situation.
It's about naming.
Okay, Mr. Mikes. One warning, please, sit down. Thank you. Second warning, Mr. Mikes. Third, and you're out. All right. I have a motion and a second to pass item 10.3. And is there any other comments from the public? Thank you. Motion and a second to, to approve item 10.3. Alora, please call to a vote. I think we'll all be proud to vote on this.
Yes. Commissioner Davis?
Hundred percent yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Who, me?
Yeah, I turned your mic on.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Absolutely yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on business, we're gonna go to item 13.2. And this is a citywide business recruitment incentives initiatives. This is sponsored by Commissioner Salvino. Go ahead, Commissioner Salvino.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just some things for discussion that I'd like to bring up as far as the businesses in the city when we, we have a CRA facade and exterior grant program that's citywide. Pardon me? Okay. We have a CRA facade and exterior grant program that's citywide. And I thought that just for discussion with all the new things that are coming up in the city and all the new programs that we're trying to do with the CRA, I was gonna ask you that maybe we could expand this, this program. Well, they tell, one tells me to go, one tells me to wait. Okay, I understand. Celebrate, celebrate, dance to the music.
We're okay. Okay, Commissioner Salvino, you can start. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyhow. What was I talking about? Anyhow, I was asking, just for just conversation, it maybe could come up, we could talk about the expanding the citywide program to do some matching pro, grant programs throughout the whole city, not just through the CRA. To help the businesses that, not just for the facade, but to start up a business, to, you know, renovate a retail store. Example, using retail space as a cafe, restaurant, you know, match it, you know, and turn it into something else. It's just something I thought that, you know, while we're trying to grow our city and, and offer certain amount of monies in the CRA, maybe we should offer it citywide. Whether it's a facade or something on the interior. It's up for discussion, you know, we that's just something that I, I thought we could talk about and and be able to offer, you know, these new businesses coming in or as, as an incentive for businesses to come in to try to you know, there's a couple of things that you see what's happened and there's a couple, a lot of empty stores up in US1. And, you know, we could fill those up and, and so the businesses that are there that wanna match, you know, once we, and we, there's no I didn't set any numbers or monies or anything like that, it's just something that we could talk about if you're interested. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So Commissioner, you're talking about outside of the CRA, obviously.
Yeah, throughout, throughout the whole city.
Okay.
Whether it's, whether it's out West Griffin Road or.
We're trying to promote more small businesses for our empty storefrontage that we have all along Griffin, along US1.
It could even be warehouses that are, are starting up a business that might wanna, you know, to do something on, in a, in a business, to do a machine shop or something just as far as we get a business going, something that we can help them match up if they need, you know, help with an office space or anything, you know, but we can, we can design whatever, whatever the commission wants.
I know you mean well, it's just, there's definitely a lot of parameters that we're gonna have to put in place for this, so. You know, it, it sounds good, it, it, it looks like it might be able to help, but.
Well, it's in the planning stages, we can ask.
Yeah, is the juice worth the squeeze is what I'm saying, you know.
We can ask the administration and maybe come up some ideas for us.
Uh, well, let me start, Commissioner James, she was waiting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I love the idea. I think that we definitely should tier it or phase it in to see how one thing works. I know that right now we have like the facade grant for inside and outside and I think that West Griffin Road, west of 95 definitely needs help in that area. And I think it would spark some redevelopment in that area, but I, I do think just even the existing areas could use better signage and a facelift and things of that nature and not just on the outside, but also on the inside. I know for a while we had the interior and we had the facade grants and then we just cut it down to just the exterior, but I, I do think that I don't, I don't wanna just put lipstick on a pig. So I think that we need to go from the inside out and, and I would be definitely in favor from starting there first and just on one road first because like you said, you don't wanna overwhelm the staff or we have to see what type of response we are going to get before we move to a next phase, but thank you for that and that, that would be my input.
Yeah, and to go what you're saying and how to implement our message, you know, of how we're gonna try and implement this program, we definitely wanna make the community aware. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's a good idea, but what are, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna have a workshop on this or do you wanna? I, I, I'm just, cuz I think it's something we do need to discuss cuz there, I think it'll help some, but it's not gonna help all.
I think that, I, I, if we, if I get just consensus that we wanted to go forward with it.
Yes.
I think we should leave it up to the city staff to, to come back with, I think something like, like Commissioner Davis just said, I mean, Commissioner Commissioner, Commissioner James has said about maybe doing it.
Welcome to my world.
Maybe sections or whatever, or whatever, but I think that, I don't know, is Candido asking that, that would be too much to ask of you and the city manager to maybe create something that, to give us a little bit of a, a little head start?
I think between what the mayor has said and what Commissioner
James, James.
It's like, guys, and it's an emotional night, and I know I discussed this earlier with the Vice Mayor. We can come back based on the dialogue with some parameters and something to work with and we'll take it from there.
Okay, is that okay, Mayor?
When, when we drive around the city like we did the other day and, and we see so many foreleases and so many open spaces, it's, it's a good opportunity to, I thought that when Commissioner Salvino brought it to our attention. That'd be something that we could work with.
It's just, these are private buildings that are owned, okay? So it, 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 it may not be occupied cuz the landlord's asking five times the rent rate. You know what I mean? There, there's many different situations. It's not just, oh, we have this open store space and come right in, start your own shop. You know, so it, there's just a lot, like I said, of factors that go into this. With the landlord, with the new tenant, with what type of business they're trying to do. I'm just, you know, like I said, it's a great idea, I like it, but we don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves, you know, sometimes we tend to put the car in front of the horse. Yeah, yeah, but that's what we're here for, to discuss our barriers, so to speak, that we have to get over. You know, we can't just say, here's the program, sign up for it. Yeah, yeah, but if, you know, if we do, implement this program and we got three businesses and within six months to a year, that would be incredible. Cuz I, I don't think we've utilized the facade grant that much in six months to a year, probably just like three times. And it's been there for like five, six years. Yeah, so, yeah. This is why we're having this open discussion, so we have consensus to continue this discussion and we could have internal discussions with the city staff as well.
Yeah, yes.
All right, awesome, awesome. Okay. Item 13.3, this is from Eve. This is a charter review board recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So the charter review board has met for the past year and they've made a number of recommendations. I don't think there's anything particularly controversial, but I need direction from you, so I don't know if you'd like to spend some time looking at the questions and come back and have a discussion or you wanna workshop or you want me to put it on for first reading, you know, of the ordinance cuz it is associated with an ordinance, but I wanted to give you those options. And brief summary, there basically a lot of cleanup and some, some things related to procurement and changing the tenure recommendation for an elected official to be two years in the city and for a board to one year. Those are the basic items. So what would you like to do? Would you like a workshop? Would you like to take it home to review and get back to me? Would you like to just put first reading of the ordinance on?
I'll speak on behalf of the commission, see if we get a consensus. I think we should all receive it individually and we could go over it with Eve individually as well and then we just put it on first reading and we go from there. All right, have consensus? Good, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, item 13.4, this is a call to artists for the City Hall Garage. We are, we've been waiting all night for this one.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. So I'm gonna be presenting the Public Art Advisory Board's recommendation for the final artist selection for the east wall of the City Hall parking garage. The selected artist is Ernesto Maranjay. He's an artist from Miami. He works, his work is plant and animal relationships. And he's painted many murals throughout the United States and abroad. So this is the design concept. The title of it is Looking Forward. All the animals are looking and flying forward to Dania's future and it encourages the viewers to look to the future as well. The concept features the gaze of the Florida panther, the Florida birds and Florida landscape, inspired by local wildlife. The theme is nature and community. In this slide, I've highlighted some areas that the artist could potentially locate some plants which he feels would add richness and interest to the piece. Options for installing the plants would be trellis-like structures attached to the wall and we could use live or artificial plants. Or you can plant on the ground and they grow up and when you stand back from the mural, you see it kinda blends with the art. Those are the three options for planting. Some of the planting materials that we could use, like I said, it could be artificial or live. We have moss, succulents, air plants. They're looking for low maintenance type of planting. The estimated time to complete the mural would be five weeks and it is within the budget. This is what the mural would like, look like on the side of the wall. The Public Art Board also discussed, um, a future call, maybe like a Phase Two to this, um, mural, that would incorporate an augmented reality, where you would take your device, your tablet or phone, and hold it up to the mural, and you'd see some type of animation, or there'd be QR codes that would give, um, educational information on the animals in the mural, or history on Dana Beach. So with that, the staff is recommending approval of the artist.
I like it. Is there an alligator in there?
No, I didn't see an alligator.
Tell the artist that an alligator.
Okay, I will make that recommendation.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I like it as well, I, you know, I'm always gonna, I'm a logo person. Um, is there a way, and not with our colors, but maybe colors that go with the art, to put our logos somewhere, maybe at the top, in the corner, or somewhere else that could be visible, that would be my only, um, input to it.
Okay, I'll bring that back to the board.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have our logo and an alligator, have we got it, Ann? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I, I do think the, uh, artwork is beautiful, but, uh, one of the comments, or a couple of the comments from myself and, and a couple of the board members, was that, um, the art should speak to Dana Beach, not that it has to have specifics, like another pier or something, but maybe ha, work with the artist to create something that has more Dana Beach characteristics, and, and the wow factor, so, um, I just want to be able to work with the artist to make sure that, or that we can have consensus to work with the artist to, um, have some more specific elements that are directly related to the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner James?
Yes, and, and just to add to that, like, um, knowing, um, I don't want to say knowing the history of, uh, which animals and stuff that we have, there are a lot of wildlife that we have here, and, uh, and, and so I would agree, and I'll give you consensus.
We, we used to have Florida Panthers in Dana, we did. A- a- and I like the Florida Panther, because it does promote, you know, uh, conservation and the environment as well, and it shows you just what's outside the, you know, what's in your back door here in Dana. Yeah, like, when, 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 when Commissioner Salvino was a boy, uh, there was Panthers here still, so, um, I'm, I'm, no joke, really, there's, there was Panthers on the Finger Islands of Fort Lauderdale before they developed them, so, uh, yeah, exactly, so it, it would be nice, well, the monkeys are non-native, you know, but, yeah, and we have coyotes, I know, but, uh, great job by the Art Board, we're obviously gonna give our two cents, but overall, I think it was, uh, a great job by the Art Board, and you guys did it rather quickly, right? You narrowed it down from a hundred artists, or fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty artists?
Down to forty-six qualified, down to five, down to three, down to one.
Alright.
It was a process, yes, I'm very excited and happy for what we've chosen.
Can I just get a little clarification, because I'm, I'm sure the artist's gonna want it? So, I understand you wanted some, some tweaking, you want the logo in there, and you want maybe an alligator, but the, working with them, isn't this what they're proposing, isn't that what you've basically selected?
So there's still some, um, phasing of the project, we have to do some community outreach, there will be some minor tweaks, but this is the overall design concept, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, because I don't want to, you know, you, the board is seeing one thing, and then it comes back something else, and then where was the input on that, so I just want to make sure that the board, the Art Board and this board are on the same page.
Yeah, we'd like the artist to come in, if we approve, we'd, it would be nice for the artist to come in.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd make a lot of sense.
Alright, wonderful, I'll let him know.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner James?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed, alright.
Thank you.
Item thirteen point four has passed. We don't have any appointments, so we're gonna jump right into Commissioner comments, we're gonna start with Commissioner Davis. Go ahead, Commissioner Davis, you have the floor.
Mine are going to be brief this evening, thank you, Commissioner Salvino, for your support. Um, we have, I want to first and foremost, um, send my deepest condolences to, uh, the Newby family, we did lose, uh, David Newby Senior, uh, over this past week, and, um, he is, uh, I think one of the residents ti- turned him as a true Dana pioneer, and I really just love to sit down and hear stories from him, and he would give me, uh, just the most incredible details, he remembers everything from growing up, and high school, and sharecropping, and addicts, and really go into the details of his, uh, life as far as adversity, and discrimination, and triumph, and then hanging out with the celebrity and the stars, and I want to thank our mayor for having the foresight to give him his flowers, um, prior to his passing, he was, really will be greatly missed in the community, and, uh, we wish, uh, his family all the best as they deal with his passing. Next, I'm just going to talk about our, uh, trip to Tallahassee, I think that it was very successful. We, uh, to reiterate what the manager said, we were able to go and meet with the, um, incoming House Speaker, and, um, we really had a great time in being able to sit down and come up with a plan for how to address our specific drainage projects, how to prioritize them, and how to go through the process, so I really want to thank the city manager and the mayor for, uh, creating a team that was really, uh, successful in Tallahassee, and we look forward to seeing the results this year. I also have, I want to thank, uh, Senator Pizzo, he did a great job, he, when we met with, uh, Lauren, uh, Senator Buck and Senator Pizzo, they gave us information about Form Six, and I did attend the presentation on that, which was very, very, very well attended, and they gave specific examples about Form Six, there's a live attorney that you can speak to if you call the number, so, I, I just don't want to duplicate efforts, I want to see if we can look at, um, looking at the video, and I know that we, uh, agreed to have, I think, um, the other attorney to give us information on it, but if you just review Senator Pizzo's, um, presentation with all the examples and all the resources, I, I think we may not need to go ahead and, and have a whole, you know, take up another workshop period or time, so, I'm seeking consensus to be able to, either, if you want to have the meeting, you can still have it, but if we want to do, then watch the video, then to be able to do that. To make the, the meeting optional.
Oh, the Form Six, yeah.
Okay. So as far as attendance, that's what I'm, okay, yeah, because he did a really good job. Alright, thank you. And then, did you see it? Okay, anyway, um, let's go on, the last thing I have is a request from, um, a request for a proclamation that was, I received from, um, Michelle Hastings regarding Paula Mo- Morning Sunday Joy. She did have a specific request for a proclamation, because Paula started her career here in Dana Beach, and she was instrumental, and, actually, I have the words here. She was a resident of Dana Beach in the early nineties, and she worked closely with the branding and development of Modelo Park Projects. Uh, she's a resident of Modelo Park, and relied on education and historic journalism to host events in the community. Uh, she is celebrating, uh, forty-five years in radio, and she got her start in career here in the city of Dana Beach, so, um, she is, so, so I'm seeking consensus to have a proclamation approved for her forty-five years on the radio.
We have consensus? Yes, we have consensus.
Perfect, thank you, and last but not least, uh, Lori Bear is getting, um, honored for the MPO, and what I'd like to do is make sure that, uh, we, that, the table that we had does not include an ad, and so I'm seeking two hundred and fifty dollars, or four hundred dollars for, uh, full-page ad, and I believe, two hundred and fifty dollars for a quarter-page ad, uh, to be able to, either one that you want to do, to be able to celebrate her and have an ad in the MPO Region Awards for her program. So half a pages, full page is four hundred, half a page is two fifty. Sorry, yeah, full pa, I had to get the information. What do you want, half, full, full half?
Uh, half page.
Half page, alright, so half page for two fifty, and, uh, that will, in my comments, thank you all, and have a great evening.
Alright. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, I'll start back with, uh, Mr. Newby, and, and everything he's been to the city of Dana Beach, he actually, uh, him and his band actually played live music at Tropical Acres, my first round of, um, campaigning, um, here, and it was, it was quite interesting, because he was older, and he was on the drums, and, but just to give him that opportunity of doing something that he loved, uh, I appreciated that, and so, to him and his family, and his son who continues to serve on various boards and in and out of the city, uh, we send our deepest condolences. I want, um, to express my gratitude to Parks and Recreation, especially with Ashley and, um, Kayla, who went above and beyond, um, the, the, what duty calls to make sure that we had a successful MLK, um, series of events. The gala was well-attended, um, thank you to the City of Hollywood for purchasing a table, putting their flow in the parade, um, all of the staff at CW Thomas Park, um, and even additional support from the Parks and Recreation Budget to ensure that we can get people out of, um, of their homes and come to CW Thomas Park, which, I think, um, compared to last year, we have grown, and I, and I know that we have many more ideas, um, to enhance the operations, uh, especially for the parade. Uh, thank you to Mark and Mad Arts, um, for allowing us to use the facility for the gala, it was beautiful, and they, we had a beautiful art cube with different images and videos of Dr. King, and just the way that they're able to infuse art in so many different ways, I think it was great for the community to be able to see. Um, I am going to be submitting a budget, um, to the, not only to the the city manager, but to the commission as well, so, you can see, uh, how much all of this stuff costs to have, because we are going to need, and on that board, an increase of funding in order to make it successful, as, you know, the city and Parks and Recreation staff have enhanced and evolved so many different areas, operations of events, I, I want this one to continue to evolve as well. I wanted to ask from my contingency, and I, and I know, I'm not sure, I will have to go through Frank, I, I know that we just did a we just did a, a presentation on it, but I, I want to know if I can partner with, and I'll, I'll give him the organization and everything else his name, to, um, host an informational fair on knowing your rights in regards to disability access, homelessness and poverty, criminal justice, and other civil rights issues. I wanted to have it sometime next month, um, at CW Thomas Park. I think that that area would benefit the most for it, but it's, um, open to everyone. And the cost of it would be, um, thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars for, um, attorneys to come out, and really educate, um, the community on their rights when it comes down to poverty, and homelessness, and, um, disability access, and all these other things that happen in, in some of our vulnerable communities.
Vice, Vice Mayor Lawton?
I just don't know that you can get that organized that quickly. That's, sounds like it's gonna be somewhat significant, and there's a lot of moving parts to that, and I, I, I'm just, I would want to know if that's something that could even be done that quickly.
Okay, well, if not next month, I, just before the park is tore down, it doesn't, I'm not tied to a specific date.
And I'd like to see an agenda on it, like a program.
Not a problem, I can show you all of that stuff, it's the Florida Justice Institute, if you all want to look it up. That is the organization, and so, um, I can provide you with things that they've done before, and then an agenda of what they would, uh, cover on, on this one. I'm seeking consensus. Do we have consensus?
It's one of those nights.
We have consensus?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, thank you.
We have consensus, Clark.
And with that, that will conclude my, my report.
Commissioner James, I just Googled it, they are a nonprofit public address law firm.
And, and they would, they would just be the speakers, or we just provide the, the, the space, and we would advertise it? Okay, okay.
Alright, Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor, um, speaking of Mr. Newby, you know, you used to talk about how old I am, uh, I go back quite a ways with him. Just, uh, my condolences go out to him and his family, he's, he's done, you know, quite a, well, I shouldn't say quite a bit, but he's done, uh, a few jobs for me through the years, as, as I was growing up, and, uh, but, uh, I do express my condolences to the Newby family. I'd like to talk about, uh, the motorcycle show this weekend coming up at Frost Park. Uh, for everybody that's listening, and all the people in the audience, uh, that there is a motorci, uh, antique motorcycle show this, uh, Saturday. It's just Saturday, it's not Saturday, it's Saturday, right? And, uh, the event is usually, uh, attended by thousands, and people come from out of the country, and you'll see motorcycles, uh, that you, uh, never seen before, some of them are, uh, rok, uh, obviously they're antique. Hoping everybody will come out and, and support the, uh, antique motorcycle show at Frost Park on Saturday. I would, I would like to, you know, I, I probably don't, you know, I'm not even sure how to say this, but, you know, I lost a good friend this week. Her name was Kathy, she was, uh, and I don't usually talk about it, but, uh, somebody else out of another city, but she worked for the City of Hollywood for over thirty years. Uh, she worked in the communication, uh, and, uh, she was a, you know, she did wealth with them. The reason I express that too, if you don't know, that's Tamra's mother-in-law, that works in our water department. And, uh, and, uh, it's just, it was a tragic loss, because she was, uh, just went in for, uh, heart surgery that they would, and, uh, it, it didn't go well, but, uh, my condolences to the, the Tamra and the, and, uh, Kathy's family, just, I just want to bring it up, because she was really close, and, uh, she's a good friend, and, uh, just to see Tamra, you might, you know, want to say something to her as well. Not this Tamra, that Tamra in the water department. Tomorrow, uh, last, two weeks ago, uh, the Prestige Club had their adequate, uh, etiquette, uh, training, uh, at the Tropical Lakers. There was probably eighty, eighty-five or eighty-eight kids there. Uh, I, I ask all of you tomorrow if you could make it for, uh, for an hour, you know, I mean, uh, Commissioner Davis and I have been there, I think Lawton, Commissioner Lawton's been there. I'm not sure if you have, or you have.
I was there.
You were there, you came in too, there was, uh, they're gonna do it again tomorrow, uh, for, for, uh, Dana Elementary. If you want to be there to help out, it's, it's, it's an interesting program, and it's cute, and, uh, you see these, uh, little elementary kids, you know, dancing, trying to dance with the, the, the girls, and they get, you know, they get embarrassed, you see them, uh, pull the chair out for them, and, uh, push it in, they, we teach them how to tie the ties, I'm still practicing on my own, and, um, they, um, teach them how to set the table, and how to cut the, how to cut their food, and, uh, it's, you know, without, sorry, without the, um, you know, without those, you know, if they, those, and some of those kids, where it's just kind of sad, because some of those kids sit down to eat, and they go, what are we eating, and they go, what's the matter, I go, I haven't eaten in two days. You know, and, uh, it's, it's a horrible feeling in, in your gut to hear the kids say that, that's, you know, nine or ten years old, that's, it's hungry, it hasn't eaten two days, but anyhow, uh, when they hear that, for the Prestige, because they seem to make it work, and if we can hear that too, we might want to find out who they are, maybe offer something, I'm not sure what we can do, I just hate to see a kid not go hungry. Uh, it starts, excuse me, it starts at ten o'clock, but I think if you get there around ten thirty, uh, you'll be okay, because the buses come.
It goes from ten to twelve.
Huh? Yeah, it goes, it goes ten to twelve thirty, and, uh, and then, you know, you can, you can leave after they start dancing and stuff, because they, they, they play around, but you, for about an hour and a half, it's, 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 it's teaching. Uh, speaking of the Prestige Club, uh, they're gonna host a, uh, you know, and, and we've been involved with them a lot. They're gonna host a gala in October, and that's a fundraiser for them, and those monies go to other programs that, that they feed kids and stuff, I didn't know if the city would be interested in, um, purchasing a table, just, we don't have to do that tonight, but it's just something to think about, uh, it's in October. And, um, I think that, I think an email went out to everybody on that, did it, or not? So you can review it, and, uh, maybe the next meeting, we can talk about it, if you're interested, if not, if not, then I'll just get my own ticket and go from there, okay? That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino, alright, on to Vice Mayor Lawton.
Thank you, I will be brief, um, I do also want to express my condolences to the Newby family, I actually just saw Mr. Newby, um, a couple of weeks back, he sta, he came in with his son to see Joey Gilmore play at our place, and they had played together in the past, so it was, it was, uh, kind of...
He's, he came in with his son to see Joey Gilmore play at our place, and they had played together in the past, so it was, it was kinda fun. So I'm glad I got to see him more recently. Just a reminder that the Celebration of Life for Bill Harris is on Thursday, twelve to three, at the casino. I think it's gonna be very well-attended. Anyway, and thank you again to my colleagues for approving this tonight. I really do appreciate it. I also wanted to wish a happy birthday to Jimmy Peterman. His birthday is tomorrow. He's one of our older residents. He's been involved in the city forever. But anyway, so his birthday's tomorrow, so I wanted to wish him happy birthday. I also, I wanted to bring up one thing. I've mentioned this to, in passing in the past, like privately, but I just, I, can we look into, like contacting FDOT or somebody about the street signs, like for the, the names of the streets? 'Cause they, like Griffin Road, for example, or Dan, East Dania Beach Boulevard, or whatever it is, they're all peeling off, and they look terrible. It just looks awful. And I know it's FDOT that does it, it's not us, but if we could just contact them and see if they could maybe replace some of them, at least on the main roads, because, I mean, they're on some of the side streets too, but the main roads are really bad.
And, and we'll continue to be reaching out to them, because we've had this discussion, and I know Dinsler has reached out to them, 'cause I, I just saw the one on, on Dania Beach Boulevard right there on Federal, it's like, it's terrible.
I mean, we have our nice banners up, and we have the lights for, for the holidays and everything, and then you see this, and it just, it looks terrible. It just doesn't match. And the last thing that I'm gonna say is happy birthday to my husband, is today, and I have been stuck here all night. So I would like us to get out of here soon, thank you.
I'll try and get you out of here. Manager Garcia, uh, didn't we, we're gonna redo our street signs in the city?
I'm sorry, sir.
We're gonna redo our street signs in the city, right?
We're going to be enhancing existing signs. We're going to be bringing weigh-finding signs, and we're also going to be bringing signage on the major corridor that lets folks know that they can park in, in the parking garage.
Okay.
But I think in, in the future, it may behoove you, and, and even I worked on it, you know, when we were in Palmetto Bay. You know, you know you're in Coral Gables because of those little white signs.
Yeah.
You know you're in certain cities. So I think that this is something that perhaps you guys can look at in the budget. And I think it's our time to create our street signs, you know?
Yeah.
Especially now in light of the Huron Twentieth. So I think that's, that's something that we should definitely put in the budget.
Because the ones we have are awful.
Exactly.
I thought, I thought we had initiative towards that, right?
No.
No?
Wayfindings.
All right, okay. Well, now we know what to go for.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Thank you Manager Garcia. Okay. I'll start with the business. So you guys saw the boys staters that came in here, and they gave a little presentation. I think they have to turn in their applicants soon. Out of each post, if possible, you know, so Post 209 could probably get two boys, two girls from Hills, and then Post 304 probably get two boys, two girls from South Broward. I, you know, we'd like to have kids that live in Dania, but you know nowadays, it's hard to find kids to volunteer, especially go away for a week, tell us, you'd learn about the government. So we'll work with the American Legion posts. I think it's like seven hundred dollars a kid, so I'll just ask for, like, what, six thousand dollars? Just, just as contingency?
Not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed six thousand dollars. Yeah, because we have to make sure that they meet the application processes, and, and that we, we make sure that they have them in. Oh yeah, it's a fantastic program. So I'd like to continue that tradition of us helping out the Legions, you know, entertain the youth on, learn about local government. So I, I'll take it out of, if we wanna take out the overall contingent, the commission contingency, yeah, I would say we'll do six grand out of the, not to exceed six thousand dollars out of the commission contingency. Two boys, two girls from Post 304, two boys, two girls from Post 209, so we'll have to get in touch with the commanders of each post, and make sure that they're on top of that. If we've already missed the application deadline, you know, then the money will go back, I guess, in the contingency funds. Just wanna put that on public record. Yes, we have the Vintage Motorcycle Show on Saturday. Bill Harris' service is on Thursday. We have Four Chaplains Day on Sunday. Yeah, at Nova Southeastern University. Uh, yeah, of course, of course.
Two o'clock?
Yeah, two o'clock.
It's usually two o'clock, yeah.
It's at two o'clock at Nova Southeastern University. The National Commander of the American Legion is, speaking of American Legion, the National Commander of the American Legion is gonna be there in the National Chaplain, so it's a really impactful event. It goes all the way back to self-sacrifice and service for your country, and, you know, giving, giving up your life for your, your friend, for brotherhood. So it's a, it's, it's, it's a great ceremony. I, I encourage all to attend. I know Candido's going. You know, he's gotten very involved with helping out, and it, it's a real privilege to be able to work with the city staff and work with the commissioners to support our American Legion on a national scale for an event like this. So yeah, the Jazz community and the Dania Beach community lost a legend in Mr. David Newby Senior. I'm very grateful that we're able to honor him, you know, just a few months ago. So that, really, good timing, very pleased with that. We definitely lost, lost a good one there. And Dania Beach also lost a native, Jeffrey Thomas Ryan, my uncle. He passed away last year, and we had a service for him in Tallahassee a couple of weeks ago before we went up as, as a commission to visit our representatives. So, yeah, just wanted to let, let that be known. The Ryan family definitely lost, lost a good one as well. My Uncle Jeff, there were six boys and one girl, and we always seemed like a whole, now we seem like we're missing just one little piece with, with Uncle Jeff. He was the nicest one of them all. No offense to anybody else. So with that, looking forward to our next meeting, looking forward to, oh, I'm not gonna bang anything. All right. Come on up.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Ignite Art and Light Festival does start toma, tomorrow night. It's from Wednesday to Sunday, from ten AM to ten PM. It is a free art event. It's family-friendly. There's two locations. One is located in Dania Beach at the Mad Arts location on Federal Highway, and Espalange Park in downtown Fort Lauderdale. So I invite everybody to attend, and the commissioners as well.
Ten to ten, Wednesday through Sunday?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. There is a VIP reception tomorrow night, yes. That starts at five PM. The commission is invited, as long, as well as the Public Art Board to attend, and it, and it's at the Museum of Science, directly across the street from the Espalange Park. That starts at five, and the event starts at seven PM.
Okay. All right, thank you Eleanor. All right, with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Hey, tell Joey's happy birthday. Is he working?
He's working.
Wouldn't be your birthday if you're not working.